Okay, the timestamp is now officially 6:03 and we are opening our special city council meeting for Duncanville City Council on April 27th at 6:03. I want to go over a few notes for everybody, just so we're all on the same page. First of all, some housekeeping for Margie and Jennifer. We are using GoToWebinar and unfortunately, they don't have all of their technical capabilities prepared so that we can have more than six people on video at one time. So as a result, I will be on all the time, you two will be on all the time as representatives from SGR, and then we will have three council members that will also be there, but we have two that, excuse me, are not going to be able to be seen, but as they wish to speak, they will have somebody go away and somebody else pop up. So that's the way, unfortunately, we just have to work around that at this particular point in time. In terms of how the questions are going to go, what I'm going to do is, once we, you two are going to give us a presentation on SGR, and once that's finished, we will do two rounds of questions between ourselves as council members. I'll go first, then it'll be the council members in their district number, closing out with the council member who is at large, and I will introduce everybody in just a moment. So that's just the housekeeping. So let me go ahead and go through some notes in terms of official public record, and then we'll start with some introductions. So in accordance with an order of the Office of Governor issued March 16th, 2020, City Council for Duncanville, Texas will conduct city council meetings by video conference at 6:00 PM on Monday for 27th, in order to advance the public health and timing of face-to-face meetings, so-called social distancing, to slow the spread of coronavirus 19. So we have called the meeting to order at 6:03. Our audience, any citizens that wish to be with us, the public notice has been made, and they are in listen mode only. And any public comments were submitted. Kristen, do we have any public comments? I didn't see anything.
No, sir, we have no public comments.
Okay, for Jennifer and Margie, Kristen is our city secretary, and she is in the background, and Tracy Beekman is in the background as well. He's our director of IT, in case we begin to have any problems. Kevin Hugman is also online with us, and he is our city manager. He will be in the background at all times. Okay, council members will turn their cameras on when they want to speak and announce their name prior to speaking. I think we've done away with that, having to speak, because they're going to show up on the screen. I'll be able, and you, Jennifer, you and Margie will know who they are by being able to see them on the video as well. Okay, we do not have any citizens' input, so agenda item number two of our agenda can be dispensed with. We are moving on to agenda item number three. This is interview and discuss executive search firm companies for the city manager position. We do have with us, I want to introduce Sheila Baker. Sheila Baker is our purchasing manager. Sheila, are you there, please?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, why don't you just introduce yourself to Jennifer and Margie?
Yes, I'm Sheila Baker, I'm the purchasing manager here with the city of Duncanville, and want to thank you for your time and the effort to come out and interview with us for the executive firm search.
Okay, very good. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and take into it now, and as I, just to repeat, Margie, if you and Jennifer would leave your cameras on at all times, and we will jockey back and forth between the individual council members. So Don MacBurnett is our mayor pro tem. He is up at the moment. Don, say hi.
Hello, Margie, Jennifer, thank you for meeting with us.
And Don, if you would go dark, please, on your video. And Jeanette Jamison, Joe Vera Cruz, and Monte Anderson, if you would come up, please. There's Joe Vera Cruz, there's Monte Anderson, there's Jeanette Jamison, okay? And if you all would go dark and bring up Mark Cooks and Patrick Harvey. There's Mark, and there's Patrick. Okay, so we are ready to get underway, those are the rest of the introductions. So Jennifer, Margie, turning it over to you, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gordon, and if you all will indulge us, I have a slide deck and the meeting coordinator has given me the ability to share my screen with you, and so I am going to start a PowerPoint presentation. As I'm doing that, just very quickly, I, as I mentioned, I'm Jennifer Fadden, I'm the president of Executive Recruitment and Interim Management Services for SGR, and I'm joined with tonight by Margie Rose, our senior vice president, and she will be the recruiter on this engagement, should the city of Duncanville opt to partner with SGR on this important hiring decision. So with that, I am going to pull my screen up here, my apologies. Okay, can you all see my screen?
We can. You're not in full screen mode, but it's okay. We've got, there you go, now we've got full screen.
Fantastic, okay. You have our proposal, and I will try to make this as short and concise as possible to give you all ample time to ask any questions you may have, but I did want to touch on some important components in our presentation here tonight. For over 20 years, SGR has focused on the success and innovation of local government. Our firm is different from others because that's all we do. Our team is made up of former local government professionals who intimately understand the challenges elected leaders and city staff face. I am a former city manager, and I have the pleasure of leading a team of recruiters who themselves have decades of experience in local government. You'll hear from Margie in just a little bit, she's also a former city manager, and we feel like we, our firm is unique, and that we really understand all of the challenges that you all are facing, particularly in a time like this. Over our 21 years in business, we've developed an understanding that there are really five keys to a successful search, starting with a comprehensive understanding of the unique culture, needs, and desires of the organization, as well as your community of Duncanville. Qualifications and fit are really two different things. The recruiter has to understand both to find a great match. We do this by conducting one-on-one interviews with each of you, any key staff and community leaders and stakeholders, to develop a position profile at the beginning of the search process. We spend time in your community to understand what your community's needs and wants and challenges are. We structure a technological system, and we watch what's going on in your community during the course of the search process. We provide weekly updates to candidates on what's going on in your community so that they're fully versed and understand all of the latest news that's impacting Duncanville. And then we have ongoing and frequent communication with you as the elected officials throughout the search as well. We also utilize a really dynamic, state-of-the-art talent marketing system that we think really reaches a national pool beyond what other firms can do. We do this by first developing a high-quality, professionally-produced position profile brochure that's really the primary marketing piece for this position. We do targeted job advertisements on our website and our job board, national and state associations, as well as local publications and local entities that are really unique, depending on the community, and any place you all would like to see the position advertised. We do direct outreach via phone and email to prospects that may or may not see that position posted somewhere. There's often a passive candidate out there that's a perfect fit for a particular role, and we work hard to ensure that those passive candidates know about your opportunity and have the opportunity to look at it. We do a comprehensive social media campaign designed by our social media marketing experts, and they're specifically tailored to leverage different venues and maximize visibility of your position. We go through a thorough vetting process of all candidates with the objective of preventing surprises at any point in the, in the search process. We do an initial screening when applicants express interest in the job. We do a technical review with both the recruiter and a search coordinator. We have a lot of communication between our recruiters and our recruitment staff to, particularly for candidates that may have been in a previous search with SGR, to kind of understand maybe what some of those candidates' strengths and weaknesses are. We do comprehensive media searches on all of our semifinalists and finalist candidates that include all five major search engines, local newspapers in every community that the candidate has worked in, local blogs and other social media sites. We offer optional psychometric DISC assessments. We do comprehensive legal, criminal, civil background checks by a licensed private investigation firm. And then as we go through the process, we try really, really hard. We work to ensure that the candidates, not only are you learning about the candidates, but the candidates are learning about the organization and the community, because the key to any successful match is understanding that it's a two-way street. And because your search is going to be led by a former city manager, candidates know that we've already asked the questions of you that they would want answered, giving them that confidence that we really understand you and we can convey that message better to the candidates. We provide a variety of news clippings. I mentioned earlier that we set up a search engine tool at the beginning of the search, and we do an ongoing communication with candidates throughout the course of the search so that they're kept up to speed about things that are going on in the Duncanville community. And then finally, SGR works very hard to deliver a process that is smooth and seamless, and so that both the candidates and the client really work through the process seamlessly. We structure our costs on a not-to-exceed basis, meaning that you enter into a contract with us and you will not pay more than that contract amount that is determined regardless of what your expenses may be. One of our core values is continuous improvement. And SGR constantly seeks feedback from both our clients and candidates to always evaluate, be always evaluating our processes and refining those to improve the best possible experience for all parties. I want to touch on the importance of social media marketing. So SGR recognizes that 79% of job seekers use social media in their job search, and so as such, we have a very strong presence on the four major media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, and Instagram, to promote this particular position. What you see here are some screenshots of our online presence in these social media platforms. This communication is both to solicit high-potential candidates, as well as to encourage key local government professionals to share the information within their networks. What we like to do is also tag any of you and your community so that the social media, the posting for the position will appear on your social media pages as well. And in addition to our social media outreach, the recruitment will be featured in SGR's weekly 10 and 10 email newsletter, which is distributed to a subscriber base of more than 50,000 people. Every single week, we'll see your position. We track how our candidates find out about our recruitments. We think it's important that we have this type of knowledge and information to better tailor search processes for our clients. The vast majority of our candidates learn about positions through SGR's direct outreach. We do more than 125 executive recruitments on an annual basis, so this is a huge information piece here. This approach also helps us to find those passive candidates, as I mentioned before, that may not be looking for a job, they may not be looking at a job board, they may not be going to the ICMA job sites, but they're looking at SGR's newsletter, and so it will help them learn about the position because we have done direct outreach to them. SGR is different. We are, though, our whole team is local government professionals, former local government professionals. Our CEO speaks at, well, prior to COVID-19, at one state or national local government conference approximately every three weeks. As a full-service local government consulting firm, we are actively engaged in local government operations and issues and best management practices. We have done a major pivot as a result of COVID-19, and have provided a complete best practices guide to local governments on the pandemic, equipping them with continuity of operations planning, equipping them with work from home, remote resources. We're in the process of rolling out the servant leadership webinar library for our clients, and so we understand that we exist for the benefit of local governments and are always striving to ensure that we're structured in such a way. As I mentioned, we have more than 50,000 subscribers to our weekly 10 and 10 update on leadership and innovation, and I would mention those are opt-in subscribers. Those are not people that we're just blasting with spam or junk mail. Those are people that have asked to be included in that mailing list. We also send emails to our database of over 4,000 city, county, town management officials and other targeted professionals. So of those, in addition to those 50,000 folks that opt in, we're going to target about another 4,000 that are specific to city, county management, because this is a city manager position. Your position posting will be seen on not only our website, which has about 36,000 local government visitors per month, but on our job board, which is the second-largest local government job board in the country with over 16,000 local government visitors per month. It's easy for a recruiter to get a stack of qualified resumes. The hard part is really finding a highly qualified candidate who is also the right match for you. They need to click with the mayor and the council and the organization and the community, and so our focus is going to be on fit. I did want to briefly mention, as it relates to COVID-19, SGR has and continues to pivot in a big way in response to COVID-19 pandemic restrictions. Other clients have utilized our process in a virtual environment to continue their executive recruitments from a virtual perspective, and we can offer the same service to Duncanville. For instance, the Nagadocha City Council, who we are also conducting their city manager search, just last week held interviews of their city manager finalists online, and it went very well. So I did wanted to make you aware of that. We utilize the Google G Suite of applications, and specifically Google Meet for video conferencing. We absolutely can utilize your conferencing platform as well. The platform we utilize allows up to 250 individual logins into a meeting with as many people that can fit on your screen as possible, screen sharing for presentations, as well as closed captioning for hearing impaired. We are prepared to conduct this recruitment within the same timeframe as we have laid out in our proposal, but in a virtual environment, pending the direction of the city council. Should the council desire to meet in person with the recruiter and eventually candidates, SGR has also implemented COVID-19 guidelines for onsite client visits for our employees and contractors, and we will ensure that we follow these guidelines, as well as CDC guidelines for social distancing. So with that, I'd like to give a little bit of time to Margie Rose. Margie is a senior, a seasoned city management professional. She will be your recruiter for this search. Her full resume is included in the proposal we provided, but she'll be working directly with you and will be supported by our executive recruitment team as well. But Margie, would you please tell the city council a little bit about yourself and how you go about leading executive recruitments?
Okay, can everyone hear me? You can, okay. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about this recruitment. I have been in local government for more than 33 years, in municipal as well as county government, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it. However, I did retire back in 2018, but prior to that, I was the city manager of Corpus Christi, Texas. I was there for 16 years, so I served as assistant city manager, deputy city manager, as well as city manager prior to retirement. I have been engaged in, I have been a director of various departments throughout my career, and I, in Michigan, I also served as a city manager there. So I truly understand city management, and hopefully will have an opportunity to work with you for your city manager search. What I like to do in getting engaged with the city of Duncanville is, in order to get an understanding of what it is you're looking for, it's important for me to communicate with each one of you individually. Jennifer touched on it earlier in that it's important for me to talk to the governing body individually, to basically hear from you, to find out what is it you're looking for in the next city manager? What skill sets do you want them to bring to the table? Based on a lot of different things that's going on in Duncanville, I would want to know from you what type of skills or experience should they be bringing to the table so that there, you're not getting someone that is not quite experienced enough to be able to do some of the things that's going on in your community. It is really important for me to not only hear what you, as a council, is interested in, but if you're interested in me also talking to the staff, different staff members, or the business community, or resident, different residences, or citizens within the community, I would be glad to do that, because at the end of the day, it's important to be able to get the information from all of you so that we can put together a position profile that will ultimately end up in a brochure that Jennifer mentioned. And it's important for all of you to be able to see and understand what each other is saying, and we will not put out that brochure until you, as the elected, the governing body, has approved that brochure. But at least you'll have an opportunity to understand what each other is talking about as relates to what you're looking for in a candidate. So when I get all of the information from each one of you individually, we compile that information and put it in brochure format so that when you read it as a draft, you'll be able to understand what everyone's talking about, and you have an opportunity to be able to modify it as you see fit. Once I know what the skills that you're looking for, the experience, the education of these, of the candidates of choice for you, I didn't have an opportunity to not only look within the massive resource pool that SGR has in terms of sending out information to the different candidates, but I also have an opportunity to reach out to candidates that may not be interested in a position. Sometimes those are some of the best candidates to try to get engaged in reviewing the profile. So I get engaged in helping to make sure that many of the candidates that come to the table meets the criteria that you're looking for as you move forward in attempting to get a city manager for the city of Duncanville. I've had an opportunity to review your website and find that the city still, you have a tremendous website, lot of great information, and you have a lot of things going on in your community. So I do know already that you need someone that really pick up where the last city manager, the current city manager leaves off, and being able to come in and just pick up and move forward, because the last thing you want is to have someone come on trying to learn, and when you really need a more seasoned city manager to be able to get the job done. With that, I would like to also say, just before I turn it back over to Jennifer, is that communication is very critical for me, and as your recruiter, it will be important for me to submit weekly communication to the point of contact so that they can make sure that information is disseminated to city council, because you should know at all times what is going on with the process, and it is my responsibility as the recruiter to make sure that you are, you understand what's going on every step of the way. So with that, Jennifer, I would like to turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Margie. I would mention, Margie just recently completed partnering with the city of DeSoto on their city manager search, and so has really a great amount of familiarity with the best southwest area of the metroplex, and I think can really speak to sort of the unique nature of the Duncanville community. Moving on, I just have about two more, three more slides I wanted to touch on. Our project methodology is laid out in detail in the proposal that we submitted to you, so I will not pain you to go through that in detail. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but our typical timeline is approximately 12 weeks following the approval of the position profile brochure, as Margie was speaking of. So once the position's ready to hit the street and be launched, our process takes about 12 weeks. Should you want to extend that amount of time, we absolutely will happily work with you on modifying the timeline to suit your needs, but that is, that is how we approach a recruitment of this nature. I'd like to share with you, as a final point, a survey report conducted by the National Research Center on behalf of SGR. In 2018, National Research Center asked almost 4,000 city management professionals their opinion on 14 executive search firms, and SGR received the highest overall rating and the highest ratings for each specific measure of quality. We are proud, obviously, that our colleagues, our colleagues in the city management field respect the work that we do and think that results in a better overall result for our clients. So with that, thank you for your time, thank you for considering SGR for your recruitment needs, and Margie or I are happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, Margie and Jennifer, thank you for that very much. And as I mentioned at the outset, what we're going to do is, we're going to take two rounds of questions in order of the district council members' number, and then open it up for random questions that they may have as we go forward. So I'll go first for the first round. One of the things that you mentioned was an optional, I guess, psychographic test, and I guess that's the DISC. How valuable is, I know that costs extra, but how valuable is it? Do we need to consider or put it aside?
We think that is a very useful tool, and particularly, if you're down to one, two, three candidates that you feel equally interested in, and and um you feel like maybe they all have particular attributes that would make them your ultimate choice. The DISC is a good tool to um add on another evaluation level of those candidates. It really maps out how people think, how they approach problem solving, how they approach communication, how they approach leadership, how they work with peoples, people of different styles. Um and so we find that it is a very useful tool, particularly at this level of position in an organization where there's so many soft skills that are going to be important um for your city manager. As I, you know, Kevin can attest, um the the DISC is a great additional tool to help you evaluate and make your decision.
So it only comes into play when we get to the semifinalists or finalists?
Yes, sir. We recommend it at the finalist phase. So once you have uh selected your finalists, we and we recommend about four to six finalists. Um but that's not a mandate. That's purely a recommendation. Um that's a tool that we would recommend using at that time.
All right, next question is from uh council member Joe Vera Cruz. He's in District One. Joe?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Right. Uh so my question uh on the package you submitted has to do uh on with Tab A, the company profile in the back. And it lists uh other services, or I'll just read the last sentence there in the paragraph. Says we specialize in executive recruitment, live training, online training, development, assessments, consulting, and various other services geared toward or geared to promote innovation in local government. So with that uh statement there, how do you guys measure uh the success of that, that extra service? And then how do they use that in an instant like this to um find a city manager?
Okay, if I understand your question, council member, uh you're referring to all of the business lines that SGR offers to to our local government clients. Um and I would go back to what I said earlier, my presentation of what makes SGR unique. Our only clients are local governments. And we have, there are a number of instances where we may have created a relationship with a client through a training engagement or an executive coaching engagement and later transition to an executive recruitment engagement. That builds our our ability to outreach to additional people. Uh when we, when we start a relationship with in maybe one business line of the company and we grow that relationship throughout other business lines, um it it expands our outreach and our network ability to maybe reach out to people within that organization. Let's say it's the city of Duncanville and we um initially uh came to have a partnership with you all because we offered a training class that your employees took. While those employees now have an awareness of SGR and those employees know people and those employees have their own network and therefore help us through outreach. So maybe those employees get our ten and ten newsletter and they're gonna see, oh, the city of Duncanville is recruiting for a city manager. Um I know somebody who might be a really great fit that I would love to have as part of our team. And so it grows very organically. In terms of how we measure that, um I'll take the first part of your question. Second, um we we do after every engagement on an executive recruitment, uh we offer a satisfaction survey to every single candidate that made it to the semifinalist level or beyond. And we also uh offer a satisfaction survey to our client. And we ask for constructive feedback on what we did well and of course, what we can do better. Um and so we measure quality through our relationships with our clients and our candidates. And I think that um our track record speaks for itself in that um SGR has an extremely uh positive reputation in the local government community and particularly as it relates to executive recruitment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh from District Two and Mayor Pro Tem, Don McBurnett.
Hello, ladies.
Hello.
I have a real simple question because the first thing when I looked at the proposal on the very front page, it says this proposal's valid until April twenty-four. So so I'd like to uh, has this been extended or or?
Absolutely. Uh when I was preparing for this meeting, I saw the same thing, Mayor Pro Tem. Um yes, we we totally understand that life as we knew it has changed. And um you know, therefore you all have uh delayed your process beyond what you originally anticipated. And Kevin's gonna stay on a little bit longer. Yes, our proposal as it was written is still valid. And uh you have my word that until you make your decision, the proposal is valid as submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Uh next is uh council member from District Three, Monty Anderson. Monty?
So you talked about individual talks with each of the council members.
Yes.
Do you do, um do you also talk with the council members altogether? Because I feel like sometimes that we get siloed as council members and we don't know what the other guys. I mean, we're trying to present a vision ahead together, you know, not individually. How do you handle that? You know, because I may think extremely one way and maybe another council member thinks extremely another way and maybe there's, you know.
There were.
Yeah, the.
Yes. So it it, we can um have a conversation with the entire council. Um that that is definitely uh something that can happen because I do agree with you. Um you sometimes can get a lot more information when you're together uh in understanding different aspects. Uh so while I indicated individually, um we still uh have the ability to be able to, as long as uh the 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 mayor and and the council is interested in having a special meeting to talk about uh various issues connected with the city manager, I will be glad to.
Okay, thank you.
Uh moving on to uh District Four, Councilmember Mark Cooks. Mark?
Well, thank you for joining Jennifer and and Margie. I appreciate it very much. Hey, just a quick question here for you. One would be uh based upon what you've learned about Duncanville so far, uh what challenges, what what did you propose to be your uh things that you will sell to a candidate about Duncanville? And what challenges would you so far after reading the information will say you have to share with others about the challenges in Duncanville? So two questions there, but uh really go for one.
So um the one of the things that I would want to uh make sure that the candidates know about um uh the city of Duncanville will come out as it relates to the brochure. That's one of the reasons why we would want to put emphasis on um getting information from um the community. Um if we are successful in uh getting this um uh this this contract, one of the first things that Jennifer will do when she uh lets me know that um we have been awarded is she will send something to whoever the contact person is, asking for a lot of information about the community. Uh meaning a lot of pictures, um a lot of activities, want to know what type of activities are going on in the community. Because what we will be doing is putting together a brochure that uh highlights all of the good things that's going on in the community. Because that ends up being the brochure that we give to the candidates um to to let them be aware that this is the community you might want to consider um applying. And mainly because, look at the brochure. These are all of the great things that's going on in the community. Uh and having reviewed your website and even have listened to some of your council meetings, um I don't think that it's gonna be extremely difficult to get individuals interested in the city of Duncanville because you are doing a lot of great things. Um and once an in uh individual candidate, if they are truly interested, if they start reviewing your community, they will find that you have a lot of great things going on, especially having a bond program uh that you approved back, your citizens approved back in two thousand eighteen. For them to be able to pick up and move forward uh in that regard and helping you there, um it's very clear, anybody that looks at your website knows that you guys are very, very committed to Duncanville. And 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 it will not be hard for the candidates to see that as part of that process. Uh now, the only thing that I could see in in terms of uh challenges for anyone uh that may be interested in Duncanville is that they will have to make sure that they are ready to be able to come in and pick up uh where your your city manager leaves off. Because there are so much going on, they have to make sure that they are ready for that challenge. Um your community is probably no different from any other community in that there are challenges from time to time. But that's why you need a professional city manager that understands what these challenges are and 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 is not afraid to be able to deal with them uh when the issues come forward. So those are some of the comments that I would have in that regard.
I might also add, if you don't mind, um council member, just uh me adding a few thoughts on that um as it relates to kind of a more macro perspective. And first I'll say, I've spent the majority of um, well, really my adult life, but all of my career in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. And so I'm very familiar with Duncanville. Um I know you guys have an awesome basketball team because my kids play basketball. Um but um people will know, okay, this is a Dallas-Fort Worth suburb. And it's a great, you know, Dallas-Fort Worth is a great place to be. There are people from all over the country that want to get to Texas and particularly the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. It's a really hot market from that perspective. And so I think uh we will be able to attract people from not just Texas, but um you know, outside the state. From a uh, as I mentioned, kind of a more macro perspective, um we have seen with COVID nineteen, there are some city managers, maybe much as, you know, Kevin's thought process has been, I can't leave my community. I I, this is not the time for me to make a change. And so that's just been something that is impacting the executive search realm right now. Um I think as as communities really stabilize and the disease progression works its way through, um that will probably be, probably be less of an issue. And particularly by the time uh we get you all ready to launch this position and and whatever period of time that may be between now and then, um ideally, there will be more clarity and stability around COVID nineteen and it and hopefully much less of an issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh Councilmember Jeanette Jamison from District Five. Jeanette? There you are.
Yes, um I would like to ask, hello.
Hello.
Um what's the vetting you do to ensure longevity of your candidates? That this isn't just a uh template position or passing through? And how many times do you place the same person?
I want to make sure I understood your question clearly, council member. You asked, what type of vetting do we do to ensure that candidates don't view this opportunity as just another passing through on their career progression? And then your second question was, um how many times do we place? Uh could you say that part again? I you cut out just a little bit.
The same candidate. How many times do you place? Um so you you place someone here and then in a year uh they call you and say, I'd like to go to a bigger city. So you place them again. How many times do you place the same person?
Um we will, I, part of our service guarantee and it is laid out in our proposal as well as our contract, um we will not come after and actively solicit as a candidate, anyone that we place in your organization. Um that is our policy. We do not uh cannibalize, if you will, candidates that we place in a community. If a candidate decides at some point down the road, this is not the right fit for me or I am not the right person for this community, because that happens. Um the if that happens within eighteen months of when we have placed your city manager, we will repeat the process for you at no additional professional fee. You will only incur any expenses that may be related to that additional recruitment. But we will honor our placement within eighteen months, uh whether you decide it's not the right person or the person decides this is not the right fit for me. Um as, does that answer the second part of your question, ma'am?
Well, not really. If um say they stay two years and you're not recruiting them, they call you and say, okay, I'm ready for a bigger city.
And that that may happen. We we cannot say, but under particular, whatever the circumstances may be that we would prevent that from happening. We obviously, if it's not the right fit for a person or the community, that's a situation that we probably want to encourage that person to move along um and work to find them a a better fit for themselves career-wise.
That's not what I'm asking. That's not what I'm asking you.
I apologize.
That if they want to um go on to a bigger city, a bigger um because I think most of us now who have been involved with the city understand that a lot of city employees from city to city know each other, have worked in more than one city and go to different cities. And so um I'm just curious, SGR, how many times do you place the same person moving up? Uh going to large, to the next size city? Not that it's not a good fit, but it, you know, they want to increase their.
You have a word that that we would never go and try to solicit them as a candidate. If they came to us and applied on their own accord, we're not gonna prohibit their candidacy.
Okay, but so you don't have any statistics or anything on how many times you place the same person?
I I don't.
I'm just curious.
Six, ma'am. Um and it it would vary from person to person there. You know, we we have placed city managers or police chiefs that have been with their organization. Well, we've been in business twenty-one years and you know, we have uh placed candidates that have that have been in their position decades. Um but it would vary from person to person. I will tell you, uh I'll just give myself as a a personal example. Um I was involved in an SGR search years ago, early on in my career. Um and ended up going in a in a different direction. And then um SGR did the recruitment for where I was last city manager. And um I was placed a city manager there. I stayed in that community eight years. Other opportunities came up during that time, but never once did SGR present those opportunities to me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure I uh attempted to address the first part of your question as well, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh and and forgive me, I didn't make a note of it. Margie, did you happen to make a note of it?
It was just what the sort of vetting do you do to ensure longevity?
Yes, ma'am.
Of your candidates? That uh they're not just passing through, uh going on to something else. Um building a house in Fort Worth and staying here for six months before they go.
So the process that we utilize to uh vet candidates on your behalf. Um, we believe really gets to that point. By the, by the time you are talking to um your finalists for this role. We're gonna have gotten to know them very well and we're going to have, Margie's gonna have had. Multiple conversations with them and understand what their career objectives are. In addition to the evaluation tools that speak to that, including an online interview. And a narrative questionnaire where they're asked to explain, what are your career goals? And why do you think that Duncanville is the right fit for your career and why now? Um, so in addition to those tangible aspects of our evaluation process. Margie's gonna be able to relay to you all, okay, candidate A is young, up and comer, looking for a city manager job. May or may not stay here forever. Candidate B, however, you know, maybe they're looking to uh find that location that's just the right fit. For the twilight of their career and maybe a longer term uh person for your community. That is absolutely part of the conversation process that Margie's gonna be having with those candidates.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to council member at large, Patrick Harvey. Patrick?
Yeah, I got it now. Good afternoon, ladies. How are you?
Good evening. Very well. How are you?
Okay, first and foremost, I am thankful that you all are here with us. I want to say that in my career, I've been blessed to have been a local government professional. And have worked in this industry in the state of Texas uh since nineteen ninety. With cities of various sizes and um having to be one of the few people. That have experienced both sides of this industry, both staff and policymaker. I understand how over time, things can change. Communities change, uh, elections bring about a change. And as a result, those things which were important at a particular point in time. Uh, due to uh change. That person uh may not be able to provide uh the type of involvement. Uh, that they did at a particular point in time. So we understand that things change. Uh, and I think we also have a, a pretty good understanding of the type of person. That we think will work well for us. So would you spend a moment or two talking about the lengths to which you go? To ensure that you find the right person for us?
Do you want to take that, Margie, and then I'll follow up?
Sure. Um, let me make sure that I am, you can hear me. So that's one of the reasons why we, early on in the process. We like to, I like to have a conversation with you, whether it's together or individually. To make sure that I clearly understand what it is, what type of skills you're looking for. What type of candidate you're looking for, uh, so that it is clear in my mind. Uh, the type of person you're looking for. Um, and once we, once I understand the type of person you're looking for, the type of skills they need. Um, the educational requirements, the type of experience they, you want them to have. Um, all of that information is very critical, uh, so that when we put the information out. Uh, individuals, hopefully the individuals that submit their applications or submit their resumes. Possess that type, those type of skills. That uh makes it very easy to be able to bring a, a group of individuals to the governing body to consider. Um, for city management. Um, but that's one of the reasons why it's, it's important for me to make sure I understand what you're looking for. In a city manager so that we can, I can even launch out there. Uh, individuals I think that may have the skill sets, try to prod them to be able to make application. Um, but all of that is important. Um, so that in going out there, uh, we, we are trying to get individuals that truly need what you're looking for. And it all starts from the beginning. In making sure that I understand the type of individual you're looking for to be the city manager of Duncanville.
I would add on to that, um, my point early on in my presentation, council member, about it being a match. It's a match process. And it's not just throwing the position out there, let's see what sticks. Um, it's really overtly, proactively reaching out to individuals. And folks that we think this is a great opportunity for. Um, for instance, uh, and I'm doing a recruitment right now for the city of Lubbock. And um, a particular person I know of did not apply for the position. But I thought she would be a great fit for this and I reached out to her. Uh, explained the position and she said, I didn't even know that that was an opportunity. I'm interested. Tell me more about this. Um, and she became a candidate and is now working through the process as a semifinalist. And so um, we, I think what SGR brings to the table is just the knowledge. And experience and network of a dozen or more, couple dozen people like Margie and I. That know people in the business, know people in this field. That, okay, maybe they're not the right person, but they definitely know. Who the right person's gonna be for this opportunity. And so we do so much of that, just kind of soft outreach. In addition to that uh really tangible outreach through our social media and our SGR ten and ten and our webs. You know, all the traditional methods that any search firm is going to do. Um, we, we think the, what you get by hiring SGR is that extra mile, that, that extra outreach. Um, due to our experience in the business.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my turn for the next round. It's only reasonable for us to know, as you just said, Jennifer, that you're doing another search for, for the city of Lubbock. And I'm sure that you have other engagements underway as well. I looked through your brochure and saw the number of people that are actually on your team. Now, looking at that and understanding, this is very, this is paramount importance to us. I'm sure it's the same thing with the city as well. Are you two the only two individuals that are going to be interfacing with us? Or other members of your team going to be operating in the background? So that we understand how much personal personnel resources are going to be applied to our search for our city manager. And you brought it up again as well. We are a first-tier suburb with the city of Dallas. We're surrounded. So we are a unique complexity of what we need there. You've seen it with DeSoto. I'm sure you see it just even, even more important because I interface with the mayors around the entire metroplex. And we're not in isolation. Uh, we're. We're a very wide and complex association of mayors. So in terms of how many people do you put toward our particular function that we want?
That is a great question, Mayor, and I'm, I'm glad you asked it. Um, and I will be completely transparent with you. Um, at the moment, SGR is conducting fifty executive recruitments around the country. Um, but that's done by a team. We have seventeen um executive recruiters. That are all former local government elect, uh, former government official, local government officials. Um, that are literally conducting engagements from Florida to, I think, our furthest west one. Um, at the moment is probably Texas. So uh, when we do about a hundred and twenty-five executive recruitments a year. So this is what we do though, and I think we're very good at it. You know, obviously I, I'm biased, but I came on this team eighteen months ago because of SGR's reputation. I retired as the city manager of Colleyville in twenty seventeen and um. I probably could have gone and done something else, but I opted not to. Um, and came on the SGR team because of the reputation we have. We have uh an entire staff of employees that do work in the background. Um, Mar- Margie, as your recruiter on this engagement, has a recruitment coordinator. That's managing a handful of other recruitments um concurrently, but that is that person's only job. Um, they have the recruit, they, they support recruiters. And manage all of the backend process for the recruiter. So that the recruiter can focus on their relationship and connectivity with the client and with the candidate. Um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Margie, but um should you all elect to engage SGR for this recruitment? It will be Margie's only recruitment that she's working on at the moment. And so um she will be able to devote her time and, and energy and resources to this engagement. Um, but we have a, a comprehensive team of people working in the background. Um, and you will get the resources of all of those folks throughout your recruitment.
Okay, thank you. Um, second round, uh, Joe Vera Cruz, council member from District One.
Okay, uh, so my second question has to do with uh the city of DeSoto. And Ms. Rose, um, I know you were the, the lead recruiter on that. Can you share maybe some of the challenges you had with that eight-step process? I know the eighth step being the survey, but I know things don't always go as, as planned. Was there any um issues there? And then, so how did you rectify those or not necessarily make them up, but you know, complete the process?
Okay, so you, when you mentioned survey, uh.
Well, it, when I say it, well, it's a seven-step process, but the survey's the eighth step. This is why I included it. But you know, that seven-step process, just share, you know, maybe some, some uh challenges you had and how you overcame those with the city of DeSoto, if you would.
Well, initially with the city of DeSoto, um, uh, we ended up going through that process a couple of times. Um, and mainly because of um the experience and um. Uh, it, it, it had to do with their, the experience of the candidate that they were looking for. Initially, it, uh, they uh wanted um a, a candidate with uh not as much experience. Um, so we went down that process and um the governing body did not feel that they had the right candidates. Um, um, for what they were looking for. And as a result, we went back out um, uh, based on the governing body changing the criteria. Uh, and once they changed the criteria to um, to bring uh, to consider someone with a, a lot more experience. Um, we ended up getting a lot of the type of candidates they were looking for. Um, and it ultimately turned out very well for them.
Okay. Did that delay the process at all or, I mean, or did it, I'm sure it did, but by how much or?
Uh, it did delay the process uh slightly, uh, because um, as, as was mentioned in this process. Once you start, once you approved the brochure and launched the position, uh, it's about twelve weeks. So once we went through the first part of the process where the candidates were not the ones that they were looking for. So we got halfway, probably halfway through, uh, at, at least the beginning phase. Um, and ended up stopping it. Uh, so that delayed it probably a month or so because we had to relaunch it again. But ultimately, uh, I believe they feel comfortable that they, it ended up being a very good process for them.
Well, thank you.
And Margie, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the gentleman they ultimately hired from Iowa, I believe. Was not a candidate the first go-round and we did some additional outreach and he learned of the position. And that's ultimately who they hired.
Right. Once they changed the criteria, um, it allowed um the city to be able to. And it allowed the process to be able to expand um and get other candidates such as the one they ended up hiring.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, back to Don Mac Burnett, Mayor Pro Tem. Don?
Hi again. Uh, Joe, Joe asked a good question because that was actually where I was going to about what DeSoto would say with you. So my, my next question's gonna be, SGR has the opt-in uh feature in their database and stuff. And there's like thirty-nine or four thousand people in there. What, what is that comprised of?
Uh, that four, that four thousand number, uh, Mayor Pro Tem are uh people in local government. Who have indicated an interest in positions related to city or county or town managers. Uh, so it, it could be people that are already in that role um in, in another community. Or who are aspiring to that role.
Okay, but it's all city managers or assistant city managers or?
It is, it is anybody in our, in our, that's opted into the SGR database in local government. They, they are working in local government in some form or fashion now. Who either, who have, who have expressed an interest in that field. So um, like I said, it could be people who are already city managers and want to look at other city management opportunities. Or people who are aspiring to that role.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, moving on to uh council member Monty Anderson. Monty?
So I think you, somebody mentioned this a minute ago, but what do you think? You guys have been around a long time knowing this area and I know your company knows this area well. What do you think our biggest challenge or the most negative thing that you hear? Um, about Duncanville that would affect us getting the right candidate?
Wow, that's a loaded question. Um.
You have to hear something, you have to hear something, so. You have to be prepared for.
Uh, Margie, you live in Arlington. Uh, do you have any perspective on that?
To, to be quite honest, um, I do understand the question. Um, I, I've, I've heard, every time I hear of Duncanville's name. Um, it, it, Duncanville is recognized nationally. Um, for a lot of different things. The two that stands out to me is sports and academics. Um, I, I can't say that I've had anyone who have shared anything negative to me about Duncanville. Um. So it is, it is very, uh, and I'm sure every community has some negativity someplace. But I can't say that I have heard of any negativity related to Duncanville.
I think um a challenge, and the mayor alluded to this, uh, being a first-string suburb. There's, there's going to be people who have perceptions of your first-string suburbs. And you know, the, the challenges that come along with aging housing stock and aging infrastructure. And the resources to deal with those things. Um, and so I think there will be candidates who just uh steer clear. Because that's not what they want to spend their time doing. And that's good because you don't want a candidate who doesn't have interest in solving some of those more. Um, I'll call them legacy problems that, that face um the first. Um, I'll call them legacy problems that that face um, the first-string suburbs. Uh, you know, let them go work and prosper and and wherever else. So um, I think hi- hitting head-on and you you've got the bond program in place to deal with some of those things. Um, but it it'll be really important to articulate upfront, it'll be important on our part. To articulate the reality of, you know, Duncanville has these challenges. We want to be overt. And communicating what those challenges are to the field of candidates. Um, and be realistic in what solutions um, the community is going to be willing to come up with. For for addressing some of those things. And so um, I I, again, back to your question, council member. I I think it's just gonna be sort of the nature of where you are in the community's evolution that presents the greatest problem. Or challenge to attracting certain candidates.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, council member Mark Cooks. Mark? Can't hear you, can't hear you.
How's that?
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer and Margie. I really could piggyback on a lot of those questions that uh, my colleagues have just asked. Uh, I'll try to make this into a question, but I would, would recommend that you would find challenges. Uh, because I, just as we're interviewing you as a firm, I know the city managers will be interviewing us as well when they come to uh, to interview. And so we'll need to know that they can overcome any challenges that they've seen in the past. Uh, I do, I would like you to share, uh, it sounds like your company is very diverse, which is a great thing. How do you go about looking for diverse candidacy? And I'm not just talking about the, the uh. One portion of the diversity for the candidates outside of, outside of DeSoto. Share that, uh, your diverse effort in looking for candidates. And then how do you overcome any challenges when it comes to that as well? And give us an example.
Yeah, thank you, council member. That that is a great question and one that um, many recruitment firms struggle with. Um, we, we keep statistics about all of our candidates and know that is a perennial challenge. Both from a racial and gender perspective to diversify um, people who want. And who want to and who are working in local government. Um, it it's been high on the ICMA priority list, and it's also been high on the, on SGR's priority list. To do what we can to promote diversity in the profession. We have active partnerships with the League of Women in Government. Um, which is a national organization uh, that really grew out of kind of a task force effort through ICMA. The International City County Management Association, um, and has grown into a nationwide. Uh, professional support association uh, for those who want to promote um, women in the profession. Uh, so it's not just women that are part of that group. We actually host and um, manage their job board for them. And so we have a really unique opportunity um, to get exposure to women in the profession through our partnership. Uh, with LWG, League of Women in Government. Um, Ron Hallifield, our CEO sits on their board. And um, is in, you know, frequent, constant communication with their leadership and and their members in that sense. We also are currently engaged in a partnership with the um, uh, LGHN, the um. Is the, the Hispanic Local Government Network. Uh, also, it's sort of an offshoot of ICMA. Um, but those professionals are interested in promoting um, the Hispanic culture in local government. And in the promotion of Hispanics in local government leadership. And so uh, we are in the process, I I I think we're probably about halfway through, but we've been doing a webinar series. Uh, free of charge to their membership, um, to help uh, promote local government leadership and giving them the tools. And resources they need to be more successful in their career advancement. Um, Ron Hallifield does those once a month. He gets on a webinar with their membership. And provides that, as I said, free of charge to um, their organization. And then in the past, we don't currently have an active partnership, but in the past, we have had a partnership with NFPBA, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. Um, also in an effort to promote additional diversity in local government management. Um, as a company, we overtly seek out um, diverse people to join our team. Um, and that's something that's been very important to me, uh, since I've come on board at SGR. And um, I think if you look at the recruiters and the the team that we've brought on. Uh, since I've been with SGR, you'll see it's, it's, it looks different. Um, and it should because we are really representing all communities that we serve. And we need to understand the different challenges that um, those organizations face. In terms of a specific example of um, how we've done. Uh, outreach to diversified candidate pools beyond the specific partnerships that I've mentioned to you. Um, I will tell you, we're doing a police chief, uh, we we have done a police chief recruitment for the city of Eugene, Oregon. And um, if you're not familiar with Eugene, um. It is, I don't know, if there were a capital of diversity, um, it might just be Eugene, Oregon. Um, we did eighty-one community outreach meetings with that community. Prior to opening the position up to understand all of the community's perspective in what they were looking for in a police chief. And so we, we really cast the net as wide as we could um, in Eugene. And um, did massive outreach in that community prior to uh, even looking for a police chief. Even beginning the process of who are we looking for? Um, and then worked that process, a similar approach to the selection process throughout that recruitment that we did. Um, and it resulted in a, a fantastic amount of community buy-in. Um, when that, when ultimately the gentleman that was selected as chief was placed there. Um, they had an officer-involved shooting not long after uh, that gentleman was placed there. And um, obviously tragic event always is, but um. The community already had so much support for the department and the chief. Uh, because they had gotten to know him and understood the process as they were going through it. Uh, that they weathered that storm quite well, and the chief is still there and 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 a very, a real success story.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our council member, Jeanette Jameson. Jeanette?
Coming, I'm here. Okay, um. I would ask you the top three reasons that make you different or better than your competitors?
Uh, number one is we understand your business. Every person on our team has a background in local government and understands the elected official, the challenges elected officials face. And the challenges that city staff face. Uh, we've, we've sat in your chairs, we, we've, we've been there with you. And we understand um, what, what you are dealing with in your roles. I would say number two, um, SGR's reputation among local government uh, professionals. Um, there are other firms out there that will go through the same steps that we go through. But they may not produce the same candidate pool because some candidates will not apply for jobs. With certain search firms. Um, certain search firms do not worry about candidate privacy and candidate confidentiality. Um, they are simply worried about what do we do to get this process done? And so um. Professionals in in our industry understand that SGR is equally concerned about candidate um, satisfaction. As we are client satisfaction, and we work very hard to balance those two interests. And I would say that the third reason that we are superior to our other firms is our network and outreach. Um, we have a number of clients who are clients of SGR because they want access to our network. Uh, they may not have the ability or resources to hire SGR to do a full-blown recruitment for them. But they want access to who SGR knows and who SGR can reach out to. And so they hire us to get the word out about their position. Um, and so I think for those three reasons, we really are superior to any other executive recruitment firm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member at large, Patrick Harvey. Patrick?
Okay, uh, thank you all very much uh, for coming. Uh, I do want to say that I I think there's another reason uh, why SGR. Uh, is certainly positioned better than your other competitors to do this work. And I would say that is because of a gentleman by the name of Mike Maury. Uh, who has successfully led us through uh, two uh, retreats. Uh, with different set of councilmen, but the reviews uh, were the same. Uh, so it's, it's good to have individuals like that who have uh, done work successfully with us. And that you can draw on a- as you um. Go through this process of of helping us find another candidate. And I also want to congratulate uh, Ms. Rose on her accomplishment, being the first African-American. City manager of Corpus City, Texas. And I would imagine because of her long tenure there, uh, she probably knows a number of. Uh, successful minority candidates uh, in the field of city management. So we look forward uh, to um, if you are given the opportunity to. Uh, uh, see if you can connect us with some of those people and and give them an opportunity to talk with us. I do want to touch on one thing real quickly. I noticed that you all mentioned earlier that, that you all ha- uh, have uh, some coronavirus. Uh, initiatives and helps that you all are providing uh, to cities. Could you uh, touch on that real briefly, number one? And number two, uh, tell me or tell us if you know of any of your competitors that are doing that kind of work?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, what we have provided to uh, local governments um. For purchase, but uh, we have a webinar that was produced by Bill Peterson, who's a former FEMA Region Six Director. Um, under President Bush, um, and John Teal, who is a former uh, public health director for the city of Garland. Those two gentlemen um, are, have decades of expertise as it relates to public health um, issues and initiatives. And produced a webinar um, and in the middle of March that is recorded and available for purchase on our website. Um, about the pandemic and what local governments should be doing to properly arm themselves to deal with the effects of it. Um, as a companion piece to that webinar, we also have a best practices manual on the pandemic, which includes a template. Uh, for a continuity of operations plan in the event that a lot of small communities don't have the resources to put together their own. They don't have an emergency manager, and they don't have the resources to put together their own continuity of operations plan. And so we have provided a template um, for communities to do that if they need that kind of resource. We also are available to work with them on a consulting basis to do that work um, in tandem with them. So those are the things that we have provided um, for our clients specifically related to COVID nineteen. And then we're in the process of launching um, a servant leadership library. That will be available to all local government employees uh, through membership. And it's a forty-plus topics related to uh, servant leadership and leading in uh. Tough times and managing teams remotely, all of those kinds of things. Um, so we're creating a bunch of content um, that will be available for um, you know, your folks. That maybe they're working remotely and you, this is a good time to do some training for them. Uh, we, we really tried to pivot because we're not doing live training right now. As you mentioned, Mike Maury. Mike Maury is not out doing live training right now. Um, and so we're, we're really trying to take this knowledge and expertise that we have as a team and make it available to our clients.
Uh, again, uh, thank you all so much. Be safe and well.
Thank you, council member, you as well.
I have one final question for you. Business is always business. Business is always about money. Business is about profit. And business sometimes takes a turn for the worst. In my experience in business, sometimes I've had to fire customers. Does SGR ever get into a position where the engagement gets so difficult, so complex, so demanding? So untenable that SGR decides this just isn't worth it? Let's just go ahead and pull out and let them go find somewhere else?
I can't say that I know of an engagement where that has happened. Once we've gotten into um, a search engagement with a client, I can tell you um. During my tenure, we had a particular client um, in central Texas that. Prior to executing a contract with us, wanted to make a number of addenda and modifications to our standard. Process that we really were not comfortable with, and so we opted um, to step back from that engagement. And allow them to uh, go with a search firm that was really more geared toward what they were looking for. Um, at the end of the day, we live by three principles at SGR. That Ron Hallifield taught me a long time ago, and every person that's on our team lives by these principles too. The first one is protect the relationship. We know that we uh, are in business because we have clients who believe in us and are willing to um. Allow us to provide services to them. The second is deliver excellence, and the third is play the long game. We are going to live by those principles prior to worrying about what the invoice to a community says. And so um, you have my word that we will work very hard to develop a a trusting. Um, and affable relationship with you. Um, should you decide in in the un, um, very unlikely event that we are not the right firm for you. Um, we will happily step aside and uh, you know, allow you to uh, partner with somebody else that you believe. Um, maybe a better, maybe or maybe more suitable for what you're looking for, but I I do not believe you will find that with SGR. Uh, we, we've not been in business for twenty-one years and do a hundred and twenty-five recruitments a year. Um, by not living by those three principles. And so I think you'll find that we understand our role is to be your partner in helping you um. Be successful in finding your next city manager, and we will take that responsibility very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have just a few minutes left. I want to open it up, or any other council members have any follow-on questions before we close? Mark?
Yes, uh, Margie, I know you'll be the recruiter on this, uh, if if the opportunity, like, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Uh, so back to your background for a second. You think you've been with the company for how long?
Uh, since two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen. What other references do you have outside? I know you have plenty of support in the office, but can you share any other companies, any other cities if you've worked with outside of DeSoto?
Um, I have, uh, as it relates to city managers' uh, searches. Um, I was engaged with the city of Venus, which is a very small community. Um, but uh, all of the others have been as, in regards to um, departmental positions. Um, and they were. Um, and they were more of a component, uh, search, which is, uh, not a full-service search.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is there any particular, um, well, number, all right, thank you, that's all. Appreciate it.
Any other final questions for them? Okay, I see no other mics coming open. Uh, so any closing remarks from, uh, from you, Jennifer or Margie?
We thank you for the opportunity to visit with you tonight. Uh, I understand the, um, the service that you, that the time you give up as individuals to serve your communities. My father was, um, on the city council and rowlet when I was growing up. And so, um, I know that the time you dedicate to do this um, is in a spirit of service to your community. So thank you for the opportunity to potentially work with you in carrying out service for your community and we look forward to hearing your decision.
And thank you very much for being with us. And y'all stay safe, stay well and stay home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you go ahead and log off, uh, our council members will stay on.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tracy, uh, or Kristen, can you verify that they are off, please?
Working on that. Yes, sir. It appears they are off.
Okay, uh, council, we are still in open meeting. And anything, uh, that we discuss at this point is still part of our city council meeting. If you have anything that you'd like to discuss, we can do so. And if not, uh, we can go ahead and take a recess until probably like five minutes before eight, uh, to log back on and get, uh, ready for our next interview with, uh, with the next firm, uh, for Baker Tilly. Okay, seeing no mics being opened, uh, the timestamp I have is, uh, 7:36. And we will recess, city council member Kristen, at 7:36. And if you all would please come back on about, uh, 7:55. Appreciate your time and those went very well. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. So we are in recess.
Tracy, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so. As people, can you, I guess you can see all the videos, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as bring them back in, I see Edward Williams, I presume Mr. Williams who are with Baker Tilly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are still in recess. We finished up with our first organization and we'll start you just as soon as we get everybody back on.
Not a problem, sir.
I showed two of you, I showed two Edward Williams.
That's correct, I'm actually using my desktop for the presentation, but just for audio purposes, I dialed in on my phone. Just as a precaution to kind of back up any internet lags or what have you, so hopefully that that would be acceptable.
Sure, whatever you think is best, thank you. Okay, so I've seen Joe, I've seen Monty, I've seen Patrick. Seen Don. So let's see, who does that leave, that leaves Mark, I guess. There's Mark. All right, let me just, just let me just do a roll call, make sure we've got all seven of us here. Let's see, Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Monty?
Here.
Mark?
Yep, here.
Doing a roll call, yeah, I see you, Jonette, you're good, okay, and Patrick, I see you, okay. We are all back here, Mr. Williams, is it just yourself or is it going to be somebody else from Baker Tilly?
We, our firm director should be joining. I'm not sure if he is on. But he is.
I'm not showing anybody else, just see two of you, I don't see anybody else, I don't know. In our list of panels, anyway.
Maybe waiting till eight o'clock or something, but you know. Well, I assume you're going to allow us to present our screen for the presentation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll give you a little housekeeping information before we get started as well.
Fantastic. Just one more, what more tool I've got to learn here, and this is a new one. Thought I had them all, but hey.
Yeah, it's, it's new for a lot of us as well, but we're, it's a steep learning curve, you get it over very fast.
Mr. Williams?
Hello, yes.
I was just saying, Mr. Williams, you're not, you're not showing up on your camera there for some reason.
Good evening.
Okay, so.
Where are you, Mr. Williams?
I'm somewhere in cyberspace, let's see. Well.
There's a little, there's a little button that looks like a video camera, tap on that little button that looks like a video camera.
That's exactly where I am. Seems like I'm only connected, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna disconnect and reconnect and see if I get audio and video.
Sheila, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Do you know who the second individual is going to be from Baker Tilly?
This is Chuck Rohr, mayor.
Oh, there we go, okay, so. Edward Williams is still out in Cyberland somewhere.
Right.
He's trying, though, I see two Edward Williams on the panelist.
I think he may have connected with his phone for the audio, it's a possibility.
Yeah, that's what he said he was gonna do, he was gonna sort of make sure he'd be able to use his, his deck. We had him, but we never had him in video. Even though, let's see. And Chuck, you pronounce your last name just Rohr, is that right?
Rohr, just like R O A R, mayor, like a lion or a tiger.
All right, got it.
Well, I shouldn't say that since there's that popular television show now. I never have watched it, but I understand it's pretty popular.
Why don't you pop your video on so you can make sure that's working for you?
Okay, mine's not on?
No, it is not.
All right, let me check this, I thought I had it going, let's see. Okay, it says I'm connected.
Tracy is our IT director, Tracy, can you help him out, by any chance, can you talk him through anything?
What I can see, I see that he does have a camera available, it just looks like he hasn't turned it on yet to allow. Whether or not I have access to it, I can try and send a webcam request to see if something pops up and allow him to. Respond, might help.
There you go.
All right.
All right, we got to Chuck.
Good deal.
Edward's out there in Cyberland somewhere. Edward, do you have us on audio? Edward, you are muted right now, according to what I can see, if you can just unmute yourself, we'll try and, there you go, now you're.
I do not see an option for video at the bottom of the. Screen as I normally would.
Look up closer to the top where it says webcam, Edward?
It's right below the, the microphone.
There is no, there is none, I do not see one, and if I try to move it, it closes the entire screen. Okay. Let's see.
Edward, if you have a, if you have a youngster in the house, first time I did that, did that, with my technical support, so. If you have a youngster in the house, they will probably walk it through it quicker than you, anybody else could.
I, I think I'm on it, it's just not there, and I'm not sure, even, it asked me to download the app, which I did. And I'm using, but I do not see a functionality that allows me to turn the camera. These things are often similar, I see system screen. I see audio questions, that's normal functioning here, but I do not see an option for camera.
Mr. Williams, I actually see, so it looks like your camera is actually on, on one of the devices that you're on. Do you perhaps have one of those covers over the camera?
No. No. So this has the audio off, this is the camera that's showing. Let's see, no, I do not see an option for a camera, and I. Let's see. If you look at the panel at top on the screen. I do have the unmuted audio in green, the camera, if you notice, is disabled. Share my webcam, there we go, well.
Yeah, your camera just went green on, on my sheet.
Right, but there is no camera. Try something else here, figure something out.
Up, there you go.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is. Make a quick adjustment here, whoa.
You're gonna hold up your PowerPoint deck in front of the camera.
Let's try that, well, that's not good. Think we're moving a little bit closer.
One more move and I need Dramamine.
Sorry. You know?
All right, what do you think?
I think we're getting closer.
Okay, I can see you and hear you, so it's a both progress.
Say again?
I can see you and hear you, so we're making progress.
All right, let's say that that is.
Okay, I'll tell you what, gentlemen, we are still in recess, I need to call our meeting to order. So we are reconvening the Duncanville City Council for special city council meeting, April 27th, and timestamp is 8:07. Make note of that. And we have with us two representatives from the firm of Baker Tilly, we have Mr. Edward Williams, Mr. Chuck Rohr. Gentlemen, I want to introduce you to the individuals that we have with us from city council, of course, I'm Barry Gordon, the mayor. And I'm gonna run down our city council members by numerical order in their district, and just a little bit of housekeeping as well. The web service that we are using has not yet perfected everything, so we cannot have more than six cameras open at one time. So the three of us will be open at all times, when our city council members, time for them to speak, they will come up on video, other than that, they will go dark. And so I want to introduce the other council members that we have, council member Joe Vera Cruz from District One, Joe. There's Joe. Council member Don McBurnett, Mayor Pro Tem from District Two, Don?
Hello, John. Evening.
Council member Monty Anderson from District Three. Council member Mark Cooks from District Four.
Good evening, sir.
Council member Jonette Jameson from District Five. There she is.
Hello, mayor.
And Council member Patrick Harvey is our council member at large, Patrick.
Good evening, sir.
Evening.
The, the format that we're going to use, you folks are gonna give us a presentation. Give, give us a little more information about your firm, more than what we've gotten in your packet. And then what we intend to do is go through two rounds of questions, which I will moderate, I'll start, and then each council member will go in two rounds. I will call on each council member by their numerical district to go through that, see how much time that takes, and then if there's any time, we'll open it up for random questions. So do you have any questions, Voss, before we get started?
No, sir.
No, sir, we're ready.
All right, welcome, pleasure to meet y'all, and so Edward, I guess you're gonna be taking the, the, taking it from here.
Okay, so mayor, you're gonna have to give me a little help here. Can you see my screen?
We see you.
Okay, let's see if there is an option to present my screen from.
I know somewhere there's an option to share. But I'm not sure where that is, Tracy, can you direct him to how to share his screen? Oh, while you, I'm sorry, I neglected the one person I, I did, I neglected to mention, I'm very sorry, Sheila Baker, Sheila is our procurement agent, Sheila, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, tell us, I guess you, you've met these two gentlemen by telephone or by correspondence already?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, good, so Sheila will be here with us as we go through this, we have any procedural questions, oh, there you go, okay. All right, Edward, we've got your screen.
Fantastic.
Okay. Rock and roll.
There we go, first, Chuck, do you want to get started?
Well, first, let me thank mayor and council, thank you very much for this opportunity, we have been serving the public sector. Cities, counties, sometimes states, special districts, for over thirty years, and. We're especially excited about the potential for recruitment here in Texas. We love all our clients, we especially love our technical clients, I'm based in central Texas. Georgetown, Edward's base near Houston. We, we have a relatively. Lengthy PowerPoint slide, but there's, there's a few transition slides there, so I don't think it'll take all that long, but. I would like to turn it over to Edward to run through the slides and then give us an opportunity to answer any questions you have. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Pleasure, okay, Edward?
Yes, sir, well, again, mayor and council, thank you all for the opportunity to present our executive recruiting process to you. We, we're excited to partner with you in this venture. What I've got in front of you, this slide, is really just a brief roadmap of our plan for today, one of the first things we want you to know is a little bit about Baker Tilly, about us as an organization. About our team. We'll discuss the city manager process, then we will discuss our process of such, we'll discuss some of the deliverables that we will provide to you. And then we will definitely take your questions and answer. One of the first things we have in our list is responded to COVID-19, I think it is almost impossible. For anyone to say that they have not or are not. for anyone to say that they have not or are not affected by this pandemic. It's obviously a global pandemic that has impacted every aspect of our lives. Specifically, when it comes to changing jobs, I'm a firm believer that city managers, you know, serve at the will of the council and often are an average in their positions for three to four years, sometimes five, for a number of reasons. So we believe that this pandemic has increased the level of uncertainty and overall disruption that candidates face. And so we've established a process or incorporated a process that will ensure that the city can continue this outstanding leadership opportunity in the face of this incredible pandemic. We understand that cities are facing, some cities are facing some fiscal challenges. There, there's talk of layoffs, furloughs, hiring freezes. And so when it comes to recruiting, which as you all know, this is a two-way street, the city manager to be also has concerns. And so what we have tried to do is to establish a process where we converted most or many of the key steps into a virtual process where we can actually do interviews, virtual tours, do multiple teams, whatever your city needs, we have the ability to do that using our existing technology. Baker Tilly is an international public sector firm. It's really a tax advisory firm, which basically we, we got bought out by Baker Tilly. It's a great, it was a great opportunity for us to be part of Baker Tilly. But prior to that, we were known in Texas's waters, Raleigh Waters. It then was sold to Waters Oldani or got converted to an acquisition or some merger of that type. It was there, it then became Springshead Waters, and now we're Baker Tilly. That is, I think, a result of the success that the company has achieved over the past thirty years in the public sector executive recruiting space. Following the strategic plan of Baker Tilly, we are, we believe it's a match because the, the notion that Baker Tilly follow is we have one agenda and that's your agenda. In other words, we work for you. We bring to you thirty-plus years of experience in the public sector field, where we have actually done many of the jobs for which we fill, and I'll talk more about that. But even more importantly, our, I believe that you'll find that our process is such that we can boldly offer you a two-year guarantee, and then we'll talk more about that as we continue with this conversation. Again, we've got offices throughout the United States, and in Texas, we also have some specific offices. In the interest of time, I will not read through those, but they're there and we can definitely make these available for your review. So let's start this conversation by talking about our team. We are led by our firm director Chuck Rohr, who has been in this business for a long time. Chuck has single-handedly placed more than four hundred executives in the public sector, nonprofit, special district. Chuck is our leader and serves as a resource and a partner in support as we conduct these processes. Myself, I am, I'm called the, the newest addition to the Baker Tilly team. But with that, I bring more than twenty years of experience, both in the state, municipal, and higher education field, where I've actually conducted more than one hundred searches for directors, city managers, city attorneys. My academic background is PhD in leadership and policy analysis from the great University of Missouri. I'm a former director of HR for municipality, Missouri City, three hundred and fifty employees. I'm also a deputy director for the state where we had seventy-five thousand employees, and my main focus was the operations throughout multiple locations in the state of Missouri. And there is more on my qualifications in our presentation. But this is what we do. I do this because this is my passion, the executive recruitment component, the organizational development, which we bring to bear. Once we complete placements, we serve as a resource for the city manager once he or she is placed in their position. All in all, we approach the executive search from a team perspective. And we have in our team, from former directors of finance to county managers, county attorney, finance directors, police chiefs, and we literally meet once a week or as needed to, to discuss the ins and outs or strategies or approaches or support that each individual may leave. This is basically a partial list of the searches that we've conducted over the past thirty years. Again, we, we are in this space, and we have been successful at it. And one of the reasons we have been successful is because we understand. Now, when it comes to it, we believe that Duncanville, the city of Duncanville, is looking for a city manager. And we've got some of the traits that we think you will tell us, this is what we need. He or she must have the right education, the right experience, stability, temperament. And the list goes on and on and on. And then you tell us. And then in addition to that, he or she must have a sense of humor. Go find that person. Let's hire them. He or she must be an expert in development. He must be politically astute. She must be an expert when it comes to attitude, progressive. Must be an employee champion, must know development, must work well with public safety police, and you tell us, go find that person. And you know what? I think we can. But how do we do that? We'll talk about that. The bigger question is, where do we find those individuals? And I'm sure this entire council will attest that my number one, well, let me, let me back up a little bit. The question is, how do we find that ideal person? And I'm sure the mayor and council will attest, you've heard this question and answer before. But the answer to that is simple. Ask the city council. You ask city council and they will give you an answer. So part of our process involves that, what we call an individual kickoff meeting with each of the members of the city council. We want to know your opinion about the level of education, the total experience, the population served, the types of services delivered, the proximity to metropolitan areas, specific experience, certifications, credential. And then we want to know from the, what type of leader, leadership attributes are you looking for in this person? What type of management style, communication style? Someone who can handle the implication of the current environment, whatever it may be. And then we, based on that, develop a profile. And that profile will include key components from your strategic plan, your mission, your vision, your values, your organizational goals, your council priorities. And we'll discuss performance evaluation. Once we do that, we launch a national or local search. Some, some organization prefer local searches. Some organization would like to do national searches. And we start that process. We provide assignments or what we call work that the, each applicant must complete in addition to the resume and the cover letter. We've got written questionnaires that delve or digs into those issues that council identified as essential to the process. Then we want to know all, all the issues that are behind the issues, such as have you ever been fired? We want to know everything because our candidates should never surprise council with anything in their background, be it their academic, their professional, social, otherwise. We want to know everything. And one of the things that we do is we embark in our campaign is kind of a multi-fold. One, we do outstanding marketing via social media. We are, we have social presence on LinkedIn, on all of the social media platforms that my daughter could probably tell you more than I do. But we're also in the professional organization websites and their job sources. And then even more importantly, we do a couple of things. Over the past thirty years, we have amassed a huge database of former applicants who are now assistant city managers who were directors at the time. Again, it is a very comprehensive database of applicants who from time to time will say, hey, I'm looking for this type of job. And so we get a very good sense of the applicants, the type, the quality, the traits, the attributes. And we kind of pursue the normal chat, the normal challenge, channels for identifying qualified candidates. And then we do the old-fashioned, pick up the telephone. Once we identify that key profile and just call and say, listen, I am doing, I've got an outstanding opportunity. Is this something you'd be interested in? One of the challenges you have is you've got to convince not only the employee or potential city manager, but you've got to also give them information because this, as you know, is a big decision. What type of schools, the community, the neighborhoods, all of those are critical components that as a former HR director, it's the type of thing that I did on a regular basis. In addition to the organizational development component, understanding what organizations need, what different individual communication styles are. Ultimately, we're looking for a best fit, and that's the challenge for us. And we do that by combining the education, experience, certification, looking at all those components. We go as far, I personally go as far as once we get written responses, I use a feature in Word to evaluate the quality of the individual's writing. We want to know that the city manager can write to a level that is targeted to his audience. In other words, I want to make sure he or she writes well. And then we take all of those and and provide you with a semifinalist report, which includes the questionnaire for the applicants, their responses to the due diligence survey. And we provide you with a list of applicants. One of the most critical pieces is we literally take the profile development component and create two or three questions that are relevant to tell me. As you all know, we can all find someone to write a very nice resume and cover letter. But we literally conduct a preliminary interview with each of the individual, asking your city-specific questions to know for sure how they respond. What you've got in front of you is an actual screenshot of the, a prior search where these individuals, each one of those screens are specific responses of no more than three minutes. There are different ways we can present those to you by simply identifying the most critical question and sending each of you a link to one answer. Again, this gives you a general sense. You've got the application, you've got the profile. And you simply take a look and say, yes, I'd like to discuss more with this individual. Ultimately, you decide who your top four, top five are. We schedule the interview and we assist your city, be it to develop the entire process for the evaluation. We schedule, we provide you with interview questions. You can use your own. We can provide you with suggested questions, which we can edit at your request. And we participate in the interview process. Again, our process is such that we will also help with the negotiation based on our access to market salary data, which is very important. And so we are in this process from beginning to end. But at the end of the day, you decide. You tell us, these are the individuals you want. And we go beyond that. Once we know those individuals, we go into the, what I call the most comprehensive background that anyone can ever expect. I want to know everything about an applicant, including areas that some people may not be comfortable, but we ask all those questions. For example, we look at everything from social security, social media. We look at newspapers, publication, anything that we need to know about an applicant, we will have access to that information if you choose to hire the individual, one of the four or five from that finalist group. In addition to that, we want to look at leadership traits, attributes or behaviors. We want to look at what are the most dominant traits of an applicant? What influences him or her? Is it money? Is it recognition? Is it gold? Is it success? We want to look at those personal skills and how those are best suited to meet your current vacancy. And so we, we use the, I'm sure many of you have seen the DISC profile and use those because it is a very, very scientific and valid and reliable tool that we believe provides you with an absolute good tool to help you make your decision. At the end of the day, we get it. We understand all of the challenges that cities are facing because we've all been there, done that. Some of us have done it for a very long time. The bottom line, though, is we listen to you. You tell us, go find us an individual with these traits, attributes, qualifications. We reach out to our network. We reach out to the social media platforms. We reach out to the places, the professional organizations where these people, these individuals are sometimes looking or not looking because they are passive job seekers. And in this day and age, sometimes it's may not be a good idea. And, and we know this from conversations we're having because we, we're conducting, we're having conversations with people that was, hey, I don't know if this is a good time. But we work through those because we've gathered information from the city. We've talked to you about your plans. And whether or not this individual you hire will need to be concerned about his or her job after a few months without a clear understanding of where we go with this COVID-19 situation. But at the end of the day, you decide, we, we basically serve as a conduit to that process and we guarantee our placement. Bottom line, we welcome the opportunity to help you find your next city manager. And I will open this up for questions unless Chuck has something he wants to add at this time.
Just, Mayor and Council, just a couple of things that I might add. One is, is we're a retained search firm. We, we only work for clients. We're gonna treat candidates respectfully and cordially and all of that. But at the end of the day, our allegiance is to our client, in this case, the city of Duncanville. Also, let me assure you that we have no contractual relationships with any individuals to find him or her a job. If that were the case, then Joe Smith or Sally Brown might mysteriously become your best candidate, whether they were or not. So we only work on the client side. We don't have any individual relationships with candidates finding the job. And then one other thing I'll leave you with is I do have some insights into the city of Duncanville. It's been a while, but I, one of my searches many years ago was for Chief Robert Brown there in Duncanville. I had stayed in touch with Robert over the years and, and I think he speaks well for your city. And, and I'm pleased that we were able to assist the city of Duncanville in that process. So we'd like to answer your questions.
Well, you partially touched on my first question, and that is, how much research have you done to learn about the city of Duncanville before coming forward at this point?
Well, I have done a few searches there and then, of course, we always refresh that knowledge. Looked at your budget, looked at your caper, looked at some council minutes sort of thing. But, you know, I think they call Duncanville the city of champions for a reason.
I want to add one addition to Chuck's response, Mayor. One of the things that is very important to me is to get a view into the cities. So to answer your question in addition is I watched a couple of your council meeting from beginning to end, and the one where you were actually in a room, a little room. But I also looked at everything from news clips where, for example, there was a recent incident at a park where I think there was some shooting involved or something like that. But I also wanted to see how your city was responding to COVID. And one of the things that I saw is that you are doing a number of things, including donations. And I think there was a, some type of program to feed the elderly, and I thought that was an interesting program. And the reason I'm interested in that is we build our relationships and trust. And if I, my dad always said, if I can't trust you, I don't want to talk to you. I, I cannot go to our I, I cannot go to our applicant or potential applicants and tell them, I have no idea what Duncanville is like. I can tell them, this is what I've seen on the news. This is the, these are the development opportunities that I see. The, this is the level of it, the, the quality of educations that are rated because most of us are pretty okay with whatever. The wife is the one that often has to have some clarity about where we're going to live, where the city, the salary, the security, the benefits, and those are the critical things. So we've, I spent some time looking at just looking around the city. That was important to me.
And that's what's important to us as well is that before even coming and putting in a proposal, that you've gotten acquainted with us. Some individuals, some proposals we received had no knowledge of us whatsoever. It was just a piece of paper and it was a little disturbing. So it's a straight up question, you know, what do you know about us before you even get here? Okay, uh, I'm going to turn it over. We're going to do two rounds of, of questions. So the next question is from District One, Councilmember Joe Vera Cruz. Joe?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilman.
Thank you. Been here. So my question falls, uh, in the packet that you submitted under a tab A, which is qualifications and experience. The, uh, fourth paragraph down, it talks about, uh, your team, uh, collabor- collaborating with, uh, you know, the mayor, city council, and so on and so forth as our technical advisor. So, uh, in the recruitment process. And so since this is my first term as a city council member and I've never hired a, a city manager, it talks about, uh, advising us under professional, you know, professional manner consistent with best practices in the public sector, executive recruitment, uh, search. So what, what would you as a technical advisor tell me would be best practices since I've never done this before?
Okay. You want me to go do this, Chuck? Let me, let me, let me give it a shot.
All right, go ahead. If I want to amplify, I will.
Absolutely. Oh, well, you're, you're welcome, you, you know. Uh, Councilman, one of the things, I've always believed that, um, a lot of what I've learned over the, the, my life is kind of the things that I learned grew it, growing up. And when we would say something to my dad, the first question would be, how much? And I think one of the first technical experiences or technical pieces you need to have is a general sense for the market or what a city manager, what type of salary and total benefit package you will have to provide this individual. But in addition to that, we want to, we are able to provide you with additional information such as, Councilman, for example, in your shoe, I would say to you, one of the telltale signs of the type of city manager would be one that is a high potential, one that comes from a city that's smaller or an assistant in a bigger city. Uh, what we try to do is to give you information that you can use to make your own decision. The other thing that I want to do is I want to say to you, Councilman, one of the big factors in city managers is, uh, this, this person may look great on paper, but I'm going to provide you with information about his or her background that I, I would not want to put you in a place where you have to defend voting for Johnny when Johnny was fired from XYZ organization for embezzling funds. And that's an extreme, but hopefully that gets you the idea. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chuck?
Uh, we think it's important that the process work for the client. Uh, I've been doing this a long time, uh, and worked with a lot of elected bodies and city manager, city administrator recruitments. And the elected bodies approach it quite differently on occasion. We have some where the, their approach is, we were elected to do this job. It's our job to hire the city manager. So all your dealings will be with us. And if we want you to talk to anybody else, we'll tell you that. That's one extreme. We have other clients who are very, operating in a very inclusive and transparent matter. And they not only want us to talk to them to build that profile, they want us to talk to the schools, they want us to talk to the downtown merchants, the homeowners associations, the Chamber of Commerce, perhaps even neighboring city managers. The, and then when you actually get to the interview process, there's a number of ways of doing that. We have experience with almost all of them. But, uh, again, I think the more information you have, the better decisions you can make. So we can guide you through that process in ways to gather as much information as possible, but not to have information overload. If you have a whole lot of data and it just doesn't make sense, there's too much coming, it's like drinking from a fire hose, that doesn't do you any good, do us any good, or the candidates any good. So we're going to work with you to make sure that we put you in a position to make good decisions and systematic decisions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Edward, before going on, you might want to close your Outlook inbox so we don't have to look at your emails.
Mayor, thank you. Let's see, um...
Without losing it, if you can do that.
Well, I'm going to try. Let's see.
There you go. There you go. You got it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Don McBurnett, District Two. Don?
Well, again, gentlemen, um, you know, I heard you mention about your database and how you do things, but, but I want to, about your database and how, and what makes your recruiting service unequal?
Mayor Pro Tem, I just lost. It says the organizer has dismissed you from the webinar, so I'm not sure what just happened, but, um, I, can you hear me?
We can still hear you.
We can hear you. I'm sorry. If you could just, um, repeat the question. I think I heard part of it, but this was all going on. I got kicked out here, but I'm, I'm back in.
Not, not a problem. I- is that you, um, you, you said that y'all had a good path to work and stuff, so I want to know recruiting services around here and about your next...
At this time, we have, I want to say we have about maybe fifteen or sixteen ongoing recruiting throughout the nation. We have a total of, uh, let's see, two, four, we've got about six recruiters that are currently doing, on average, three or four. I personally, uh, if Duncanville selected us, I would be the, the recruiter, uh, with the support of my team, of course. Um, I've got right now, three, possibly four, um, ongoing recruitings right now.
Let me, if I may, let me go back to that. The way we utilize that database, we don't dust off a lot of resumes and say, here Duncanville, we got these resumes in a folder, take a look at these. That, that just gives a starting point, having experienced, we have done thirty-eight states, uh, of the fifty. So we know people in almost all of that state, so we can pick up the phone and it depends on what you tell us initially. If you say, well, we really want to stay close to home, so to speak, we only want to talk about Texas or maybe Oklahoma, maybe New Mexico, then that's one approach. If you tell us that we're introducing candidates wherever they are, then we're going to go after those individuals, utilizing that database as a starting point, but not the endpoint. We just, again, we're just not going to dust off old resumes and...
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, let me, let me just add one thing, I, and I apologize, I, I'm finally getting the, the scope of your question. The, the other thing that, the other benefits that we derive from our database is additional connection. One of the things that you'll find is social media allows for expanded networks. And so a lot of the individuals that are currently, um, in our database may or may not be actively seeking employment. Some of them have been in their positions for a number of years, have been part of succession plans and have been training and giving opportunities to what I call the future superstar in public sector, um, leadership. And so part of that database is to reach out to John and say, hey, we're doing a search for this, do you know anyone? You know, I've got this wonderful person and they will give us information that will help us reach out to that individual to determine whether or not there is some level of interest and ultimately whether is, there is a match between the profile that we have for the city of Duncanville and ultimately the, um, the, the, the position or their career interest at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to District Three, Monty Anderson. Monty?
Yeah, uh, this is kind of a hard question for you, but you know, today, the world is looking for people who can access high technology and social media and, and really recruit the cutting edge, you know, I'm not cutting edge, that fits our profile, people that fit, you know, a, a first ring suburb with an aging infrastructure and the kind of trouble you're having with technology today concerns me. I just want to know what you know about technology and how you, how you, tell me what you know about social media and how you're going to, uh, you know, with a, an older, hey, you've been around thirty years, how are you staying relevant, uh, with today's changing times and making sure that we get good access maybe into the millennials that might be, you know, might be a possibility for this job? So tell me what you...
Councilman, um, the trouble is mine at this point, but I can assure you that my, and you're welcome to look at my presence in social media in terms of professional organizations and the things. This is, um, the first, my first experience with this tool, and I can assure you that it's not a deficiency on my part. I'll be happy to provide screenshots of what I'm seeing on my tool versus what's available. Um, this is not, I am very competent when it comes to social media, from Facebook to LinkedIn to Twitter. Um, and you are welcome to search and see the activity, the number of likes and follows that I have, the, the network that I have personally. And so I want to assure you that this is not an example of things to come. This is one of those things that happens, um, that I am totally, and I fully accept the fact that I did not, um, have this tool on my phone because I did not realize it was something different. Again, it was not something that I thought we had to load and have because it was not part of the invitation. It was not even included in the invitation. And again, I take full responsibility for that, but this in no way represents my competence when it comes to technology.
We find candidates can be reached in a number of different ways. Some candidates are at a point in their career where they read the print journals, they might respond to an ad, uh, they're getting fewer and fewer, the, as you remarked, Councilmember, that the, the millennials tend to respond to online electronic and we utilize, I think, those vehicles very effectively.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to District Four, uh, Councilmember Mark Cooks.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I want to make sure I understood the acquisition. Did you think you guys merged with someone else initially to start out? What was that?
Let me tell you a little history, if I may. In two thousand and six, I went to work for what was then known as the Waters Consulting Group. Uh, and in about two thousand and nine, well, I'm sorry, about the year before, uh, Waters Consulting Group had bought the assets, the Aldani Group. So we became Waters Aldani Executive Recruitment. Then after Mr. Aldani phased out, we became the Waters Consulting Group. Then in January of two thousand and fourteen, we were, we, Waters Group, uh, the executive recruitment piece was acquired by Springstead and we became Springstead Waters Executive Recruitment. And in May of last year, Baker Tilly, uh, purchased, uh, the assets of Springstead. So I've been basically in the same job with six different employers in there over the last fourteen years. But, uh, we have the same executive search group. Uh, the net result is we just have more assets, more technology to do it with.
So I, so I'm understanding, when I'm looking at your, your organization chart, that Mr. Williams is the director, Chuck, you're the firm director. So that means to me, I guess, that though Mr. Williams will be over the project, if, if, uh, if you guys are selected, you are, you're in charge of the entire organization.
Uh, I'm in charge of the executive recruitment group, which is about ten people total, out of, out of over four thousand for the whole company. Uh, and although as Edward said earlier, and I'll reinforce this, we do work very much in a team environment and, uh, you, you just wouldn't have Edward, but you'd also have me and several other very capable people working on your behalf.
Edward, Edward reports to you, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir. One of my many privileges.
Okay. So here's your, here's my, here's my question is, would you guys share with me on your last, one of your last, uh, executive search, how you came up, listen, there was five to eight, uh, candidates? How did you determine the three candidates that was going to move forward that you could present to the council? Five to eight, share with us how you determined the last three that you go to the council for, uh...
Well, let me give you a, a high levels response, and then perhaps Edward might want to amplify that. The first thing we do when we have a pool of candidates, uh, we're going to go back to what you told us that you were looking for. What experience, what degrees, what geographical experience, uh, what are their skills, what areas can your organization, if you look at any, any given city manager, some are strong in finance, some are strong in economic development, some are strong in infrastructure development. They have different strengths and they bring different things to the table. And you collectively, the mayor and the city council will have told us, here's what we need in Duncanville, here's the profile of our desired candidate. After we write that up, we're going to send that back to you and ask you to approve it and we'll discuss it and then... So we have a pretty strong idea of what you're seeking when we start looking at that stack of resumes. Also because of our experience, having done similar recruitments, we're going to know a substantial number of those people. And we're probably going to know some things about those candidates where they may not, they hope we don't know about them type thing, so we can help you navigate those waters. Uh, but once we get this down to a working group, if we have, just picking a number out of the air, if we have fifty applicants, then we're going to send a, a couple of questionnaires to a, a group of those, maybe fifteen or so. We're going to review those questionnaires and their resumes and the detailed questionnaires comparison to what you said you were seeking. And then we can come back to you with a working group. And along with that, we do the video interviews Edward referenced. So you have a whole package. Uh, once we meet with you, a working group, could be eight, ten, twelve, uh, you'll have their resume, you'll have their cover letter, you'll have their, their candidate questionnaire, their due diligence questionnaire, and if you choose to look at them, the video clips. And then we would work you, getting that down to a smaller group, five, it could be three. Uh, my bias is I have a few more than three. The reason I say that, if you go into the final process with only three candidates, if one of them gets another job before you have an opportunity to hire that individual, or you might have, this sometimes happens, you have a candidate comes in, he or she thinks they'll like Duncanville, they come in, they look around and for whatever reason, they decide, then you might be down to just one candidate. So, I'd like you to get it down to, my recommendation would be get it down to four or five and then go into your final process, but all of that, it's a data-driven decision. You said, here's what you're looking for, we look at those candidates and then we can make a recommendation with you to get to your final group.
Before Edward answers, I was really still talking about your process, not ours, meaning how do you get us the last five that you want us to talk to? So, maybe Edwards can kind of refine your, for me more, I'm just trying to figure out what you-
Yes, Councilman, one of the things that I think we do, we start with the basics, the profile development component is, one of the questions that I ask is, what level of education would be acceptable? Is it a bachelor's degree, is it a master's degree? Would you accept someone who has ICMA certification? And based on the responses from the profile, we use a classification process to evaluate which of the applicants have the traits, the attributes, the qualifications that you seek, and then we provide a list. Now, another way of paring that number down, and again, it's all relative depending on the number of application we receive, I anticipate on a search like Duncanville, we'll probably get between 20 to 30 applicants, applications. So, at the end of the day, we will provide you with a list of approximately 10, based on our evaluation of the education, the experience, the skills, the traits, the attributes, the proximity to a metropolitan area, the type of experience that individual presents to us. And again, we try to bring you applicants who most closely meet those traits you tell us in the beginning.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Janet Jamison, District Five. Janet?
Thank you for coming and interviewing with us. I would like to ask first, let's see, Mr. War, you said you live close to Houston and you're, are you from Missouri? Were you a city manager in Missouri?
Edward lives close to Houston and is from Missouri. I live in Georgetown, central Texas.
Oh. And were you a city manager in Georgetown?
No, I was not. I was a police chief in Plano and also I was a police chief in Highland Park.
Ah, that's how you know Chief Brown?
Yes.
And he is, he's a very nice man and a good employee.
Well, good, I want to keep him on his toes.
And so, Mr. Williams, was he a city manager?
No, ma'am, I was a director of HR and OD for the City of Missouri City and was the deputy director for the state of Missouri.
Oh, okay, that's right, I wrote that down, so you never were a city manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and so, I know that, and by the way, I feel badly about having difficulties with connecting on the meeting, that's not a reflection of your social media skills at all. We have all had difficulties connecting to the meeting, all of us, so.
Thank you.
And before this, we had no reason to connect to meetings like this. I wanted to ask you, I have been on the council for some time and I have interviewed city managers. I know that Baker Tilly has accounting background, so I'm curious, I believe it was Oklahoma that we found some really viable candidates at one time and I'm curious about, the one thing that was in question was that, I believe that Oklahoma has a state income tax and in Texas, we deal with ad valorem taxes. And so, there was some question as to how difficult that would be for someone to adjust to a different taxing base, because you do bring applicants nationwide.
That is correct, ma'am. Councilwoman, first of all, thank you for your kindness and your generosity. Secondly, there are two ways of making that. One, if we chose a Texas-only search, it would, of course, limit the number of potential applicants, but it would immediately eliminate the issue of taxing concern. Secondly, there are a number of states that has a very, very similar taxing base as the city, as the state of Texas, and there are a number of city managers who have transitions, not only from the state of Texas to other states, who have also served as assistant county administrators or county administrators dealing with the same issues or the same tax protocol as we do in Texas. I see that as a minimal challenge for a national search and scope.
So, you don't think for a city manager, it would be difficult to change from a different kind of taxing base?
It may be possible that it could be difficult, I don't think that he or she would have any issues because it's very likely that the ad valorem tax protocol is very consistent throughout the US and other cities. There may be one or two states or a few states that have different tax base, but in general, the ad valorem is often the most common of taxing protocols in municipal government.
We've had experience with candidates going from Texas to Colorado or Arizona to Texas and there's very different taxation systems and some of, as an example, in Colorado, most of the cities, their revenue stream is anywhere from 60 to 75% sales tax, very different from the state of Texas with the reliance on a balance of property tax and franchise fees and all of that. But competent city managers tend to make those transitions well. There are differences, there's nuances, but if they have the fundamental management skills, then we find they can make those transitions well.
Thank you. We were really concerned about that before and I don't think we ever got a real definitive answer from anyone on how that would work.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a major concern at all. And we would certainly verify and ensure that the individuals we present to you as part of the profile has experience with the type of tax, taxing that is consistent to your city.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Patrick Harvey, Councilmember at large, Patrick?
Greetings again, gentlemen. I hope you all are doing well, thanks for coming out. You know, I agree with Councilmember Jamison that Robert Brown has been a wonderful employee for us, he's a graduate of the FBI Academy and while, over the past couple of years, cities locally and nationally have had tension between the minority community and the police department because of the leadership of Robert Brown, Duncanville has been blessed not to go through that kind of stress and strain. So, I agree, he has outstanding leadership. As a matter of fact, one of his lieutenants is now sheriff of Dallas County.
Marion Brown.
Yeah, so he's not only doing well for us, but he's got a little bit of a legacy he's building on, so he's done a great job for us. But I do want to say now, Chief Brown has been with us a number of years now, almost 15 years and of course Duncanville is not the city that it was 15 years ago, we've changed some since then. We're more diverse, we have a comprehensive plan and so, we definitely want to make sure that we can get someone who has the ability to meet us where we are. I noticed that you all mentioned that you changed your recruitment tactics because of the coronavirus and I certainly applaud y'all for doing that. However, I'm just curious, is, is there any helps or guidance that you all are providing communities writ large in terms of strategies of how to manage or maneuver during this coronavirus impact? Do you all engage in those sort of initiatives?
We do, sir. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, I sat through a, a three-hour webinar on various, for our managers, the intent was for our managers to make us fully conversant with services we can provide to communities right there. And matter of fact, if you go to the, if you want to take the time to go to the Baker Tilly website, there is a, a link there for clients or even non-clients with a lot of information. So, we understand the world has changed, none of us are doing business as we were six weeks ago unavoidably. You're gonna have impacts this fiscal year, perhaps even more next fiscal year, we understand that and, and we're working actively with communities to help them address that.
I appreciate that and I also noticed too, I think one of us had mentioned before, or maybe you all did, you all are very active when it comes to governmental financial people. I usually hear from you all two or three times a month with different finance director positions that you all have available, so thank you for that, keep it coming. May I may not take advantage of one of those one day. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. My next question, guys, even before we got into this virtual environment, the part of the recruitment process is the tape of a video of potential clients or potential candidates, I should say, would be coming to us for review. Having been on the other side of the camera several times in my career and now even this particular point in time, there's coaching that goes on, there's different takes, I mean, how many times are you gonna take a video before you actually go and release it? But when it comes to trying to evaluate an individual strictly on a video interview that you all conduct with the client or with the candidate, do you coach them, do you cut, do you edit, do you keep going back and back until you guys get what you think is a good one for us to look at? Or do we see the raw video of this individual, so we really see who we're talking to and who we know? Are we seeing a facsimile of that person that's been coached to give us a consideration as a candidate?
You're gonna shoot the raw video, if you want to use one of those terms, you'll say the good, the bad. The candidate has an opportunity to do a practice question. It's a very neutral question designed to put him or her at ease and it's only recorded for the candidate's own purposes. You know, is my hair combed, is my tie straight, do I have too much light behind me, those sorts of things. But once they actually go on the clock, so to speak, once they've done their practice question, they can do it 37 times if they want to, but once they start actually answering the actual question, then the question pops up on their screen, they have 15 or 20 seconds and then their time starts and they have three minutes to respond. If they finish early, so be it, if they're still talking at three minutes, it just cuts off their recording and goes on to the next question. Again, that pops up. And those videos actually have two values for you. One is it gives you an opportunity to see them and have more than just a piece of paper to evaluate the candidate, but also it's a little bit of a gauge of how well they can speak extemporaneously because your city manager can be out in the community, they may be hit with questions, and if they sit there with like a deer in a headlights look, that doesn't speak well for them or for you. Those videos, in addition to evaluating what they actually say, you also can get some feel for how well they can think on their feet. And you can rate each video if you choose to do so, after you watch that three-minute clip, you can rate it on a one to five basis and if, if a majority or all of the city council evaluates those, then it gives a composite order of those candidates based on your rating. You don't have to go down that rating, it's not civil service test, you don't have to say Joe's number one, therefore is the first candidate or Sally's number two, but it does give you some feel of how your colleagues are also responding to that individual candidate, so we find it very useful.
Well, do you call out some candidates based on your viewing of those videos as well?
No, if we, if we call out candidates, it's gonna be, sometimes we give them an opportunity to demonstrate their experience on, as an example, on a candidate questionnaire and if the candidate questionnaire is very poorly written, then we may call that candidate or if they had an opportunity to explain their experience in personnel development or economic development, how they dealt with downtown revitalization or whatever issues you told us are important at Duncanville and if they demonstrate minimal or no experience in those areas, then we may call that, call out that candidate, but not typically the videos. If they get to that stage, then you should at least have an opportunity to see that candidate.
Okay, thank you.
And sometimes you look at those videos and I say, ooh, that stuff, but they demonstrated minimum qualifications or they wouldn't have gotten to that point, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going back to our Councilmember Joe Baracus, Joe?
Okay, sir, back again. My second question with the recruitment brochure and the package that you submitted, it seems like they're all a standard type or I would say standard type template, so is that what we could use to possibly start building our brochure?
Go ahead, Edward.
Yeah, there it's, it's one of those things that they are a number of different templates. In most cases, what we do is we want to gather information about the city, we want to gather information about the council, we want to gather information about all of those categories that you see. So, the simple answer to your question is, yeah, that would be the general, the framework, if you would, of the marketing brochure. What would make, what makes the difference is, of course, the pictures and the level of attractiveness that the brochure will have as we incorporate different content into the brochure. We've explored some options that include an online brochure where, again, it's all based on a link. And so, as we transition back and forth into the virtual world, we, and with most people having access to a mobile phone, what we hope to do is to ensure that the information we present can be readily available and accessible to those individuals that we would target.
Really a, that's really a boon to the recruitment process. When I first started doing this 20-some years ago, we used to pay a printer to print an actual brochure or cover and put an envelope and a cover letter and stamp on it, we were given probably about $5 each to send those out, which limited the number, but with the electronic version, we can readily send that out. number, but with the electronic version, we can readily send that out, we can send it to six thousand as cheaply as we can send it to six. So, that really enhances the capacity for us to get the word out on your behalf.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Don McBurnett. Don?
Hello again, gentlemen. I see that you selected city managers, or you're in the process for Addison and Dickinson, and I wanted to know what challenges were there, what was your experience, and what would they say?
Well, Dickinson was one of my projects, and that was a year and a half, two years ago, and they had just been through the hurricane, and right in the middle of town, they had a large compound where basically they were scraping lots and taking dump loads, dump truck loads of stuff to this large lot. Probably over half the businesses in town were boarding up, so we had to really scramble to get candidates to understand the potential of that community. We had to really market the community. They ended up hiring a gentleman from Missouri, and he has helped them do a turnaround on that, substantially reorganized the city. So, probably the biggest problem with Dickinson was just the economic conditions of the community at that time.
What about Addison?
Actually, we did not do a city manager recruitment for Addison, we did a city secretary recruitment for them.
Okay.
A little two, two and a half years ago, they had a fairly new council, and the city secretary left, and we did a recruitment for them, and that was, they had a lot of diverse views on that council, so we actually ended up with two rounds of interviews, but Beth hired an individual, and she's doing well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, going back to Councilmember Monty Anderson. Monty?
Yes, how many other cities are you working on city manager recruitments as we speak right now? Are we the only one, or are there others?
Well, let's see, we have a, we have some county work we're doing, we've got a county administrator in Virginia, we have two city administrators in Minnesota right now. Edward, to remind me, I don't, we are doing the city manager search when you head to City Missouri, but that's, we've just now, they put that on hold after the initial COVID response, but they've authorized us to now proceed with advertising, so we're doing Kansas City, Missouri. And Edward, I don't think we have any others in Texas right now that I recall.
Right, we recently, we just finished for the city of Paris, the city of Beville, and sometime last year, we did for the city of Port Arthur in Texas as well. So, there are a number of searches that we recently completed in Texas.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to Councilmember Mark Cooks. Mark?
Yes, Chuck, why don't you go back and tell us more about your senior management piece with the organization on diversity? I want to know what your diversity stands in your senior management position, and then that will lead to the question, I'll give you the other part of that question as well. That will lead to my question is, tell me about a time that you were asked to present diverse candidates as candidates, and how did you go about that? So, it's kind of a two-part question.
Okay, well, as a community, we believe that part of our responsibility as consultants, diversity is part of what we're obligated to do and should do. We are charter members of the Hispanic Forum. Also, we actively sponsor the NFPA National Forum of Black Coke Administrators Conference. Edward and I went to Phoenix a couple months ago, they had a forum in Phoenix, the Arizona chapter, and Edward chaired a panel for them, and I did a presentation through their emerging leaders on career space. So, we, as an organization, we advertise in diverse publications, we reach out to individuals in diverse communities, and I think we've had substantial success in that regard. Edward, do you want to, or do you want Edward to flesh that out?
The only thing I'd like to add, and to specifically answer the councilman's, to more in-depth, if you would, the issue of diversity is multifaceted. We believe that diversity goes beyond just simply race and gender, and ultimately, what we do is we try to develop a profile that tells us in very clear detail, and we're also respectful of the laws. So, we, under no circumstance, would say we're only going to bring X type of candidates to you. We will find the best candidates regardless of what he or she looks like, and we will present them to you in hopes that you will identify their competence and skills. And so, the issue of diversity is one that I think is very important to me personally, and I know that Baker Tilly is committed to it, and we are certain that your city is in that same category. So, our goal is to find the best qualified individual, expand it net to where it includes individuals of all race, gender, background types, and bring them to you for evaluation and ultimately selection of your next city manager.
Well, thank you both, thank you both for answering, to ask and answer the question. I don't think I've got an answer, though, on the diversity and your senior leadership of a company, and also senior leadership.
We have, Baker Tilly is a company, and I'm talking about a company with over four thousand employees. Our senior leadership team, as I recall, has six white males and four females, white females. Throughout the company, we have a higher level of diversity, and within the executive recruitment group, we have, actually, three of the recruiters are female. We believe that individuals should have an opportunity to excel based on their merits, and that's what they're doing. And we have, we have people of several races within our group and within the company, and we, as a company, highly respect diversity and think it's important.
There is also that component where, just to highlight, Baker Tilly is an international company, and so they are, we've got our offices presence throughout the world. And so, the issue, the question of leadership, there are senior partners in Baker Tilly in different countries, from Latin America to Europe. And so, I'm not sure exactly if you're referring to the executive recruitment component, the US part, or the global firm, and that may help us to better answer your question.
Okay, you're answering it close enough. I just wanted to also just make sure, you talk about diversity period, many times firms have a challenge of finding diversity in their candidate pool that they present to councils. And again, we're not talking any less qualification, because diversity is not about less qualification, it's about finding a diverse candidate, so thank you.
Well, we believe it's about the candidate pool reflecting your community.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Jeanette Jameson. Jeanette?
Yes, and I would say probably looking at Keith Brown coming from University Park to Duncanville was, you placed him correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct, yeah.
More accurately, the city manager placed him, I put the city manager place to make that decision to be accurate.
Right, we all interviewed him on the council, and I was just going to say that that's probably University Park and Duncanville are very, very different cities, and so he was a good match, even though we're totally different. But I would like to know, and particularly from both of your different backgrounds, what do you think makes Baker Tilly different than the competitors in your business, your competitors?
Well, I think several things that occur to me. One is the variety and the quality of the staff. We have a very eclectic recruitment coordinator, recruitment consultants, I have former HR director, I have former city manager, I have former county manager, county attorney, I have a former school superintendent, I have a former city administrator, also, she was executive director but not for profit, a large one. So, we have people with a lot of different backgrounds, and we bring different perspectives, but they're hashed out collegially and cordially, and we meet, we meet weekly. Right now, since COVID started, we've actually been meeting twice a week, and we talk about, I'm working for Duncanville, who do you think might be a good fit, or have you dealt with this candidate type thing? So, so, I think are critical. We have, I think we use technology intelligently and well, we have the automated assessments that we're talking about, we have applicant tracking systems, so we can keep track of applicants in an intelligent manner, correspond with them, and we also have the industry-leading guarantees on our services. So, I think all of that are reasons that I think Baker Tilly stands alone, stands above.
Okay, do you have any perspectives on that? What makes you different than your competitors, makes you better than, greater than, why we should do it?
One of the things that I honestly believe, oftentimes, cities look for city managers to do city manager searches, and I'm a firm believer that, having worked in this field for a number of years, I know where most of the information that the city managers rely on, it often comes from the HR director, who understands benefits, who understands that salary is arguably one of the biggest line item in the organizational's budget, who understands that the benefit is also critical. So, when you look at benefits and salaries, that information often comes from HR. What makes us unique is that we take the competence that each of us bring to the table, i.e., my experience in the HR, the recruiting, the classification, the benefits, the market, the salary study, the organizational development. Take that in addition to, for example, Chuck Rohr's years of experience, understanding, and connections, and network, and take those others who have been county administrators, city administrator, finance director. We bring a holistic approach to identifying the best individuals that meet the profile that you've given us as our blueprint. You give us the blueprint, we build it, and we go out and find the individuals that best meet that. So, that's, in my view, what makes us unique. Even more importantly, as an old jock, I understand that, a friend of mine told me that NFL is very similar to city managers, it stands for not-for-long. And so, it is critical that when you find the right city manager, from our perspective and what makes us unique, if we, if that individual, if you fire them, or they resign within two years, in less than two years, we get to do it all over, and you pay us no professional fees, which in my view, is a very good motivator to do it right the first time around.
Well, thank you.
Okay, on to Patrick Harvey. Patrick?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Williams, you stated for us a little earlier that Baker Tilly has four thousand employees internationally. I'm just curious, let's say that we take out the city, the city search, the city position search aspect of your company, separate that from counties, schools, and other type of recruitment efforts that you all have, approximately, and you can give me a percentage, it doesn't have to be an exact number, how much of the firm's manpower is dedicated to city personnel searches as opposed to everything else? And then as a follow-up question, how much of the, how much of the revenue position is generated from the city position sector versus everything else?
Okay, that's your challenge for the night. Let's see. The issue of understanding the total Baker Tilly workforce is, it's a little complicated, because as you understand, Baker Tilly is a tax advisory form, firm, which happens to be a seasonal, so there are times when, there are times in the year, again, this year is unique for a number of reasons. For example, as you all know, the tax date has been postponed, so there is the issue of seasonal workers, there is the issue of remote work, which may impact overall. But on average, I think fifteen to twenty percent, again, just kind of ballparking and taking all of those other factors into account, I would say for cities, we're looking at approximately fifteen to twenty percent of our total searches. In terms of the city position itself, it really depends. There are times when it seems like all we're doing are city manager searches, there are other times when it seems like they are county managers or city attorney. So, it really depends on a number of things, and I'm not sure that I can give you a, an answer in terms of number that I could validate or verify. I'd be more than happy to get that in.
I just needed a ballpark. You gave me a ballpark, I appreciate it. Chuck, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I think there's a, I think a relatively simple way to look at Baker Tilly, it's a huge company, but within that huge company, there is a relatively small, approximately ten-people group, we are dedicated to public, I have five search consultants, four support people, and it's our job, we don't do auditing, we don't do tax returns, we don't do all those other things that those four thousand-plus other people do, we do search, and we work with on occasion other people, like we have a compensation group and do compensation studies and all that, but as a standalone unit, and I would say in any given year, you ask about our revenues, they're probably about seventy percent municipal-driven, about twenty percent county-driven, and then the other ten percent are not-for-profits and quasi-governmental, like water districts and utility districts and that sort of thing. So, I think that's the key.
That's within, that's within the framework of the bigger firm. We're not, we're not, we're not talking about, we're just talking about the governmental group, but not the whole firm.
That's correct. That's correct, the ten of this.
All right, all right. But so it is a portion of the whole firm.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
We're like a division, we're like a division of the entire organization.
I got you. I I I appreciate you guys coming out, y'all be well and safe. Thank you.
Okay, one final question for me, folks. And it's I'll catch it as cleanly inside as I can in terms of its difficulty. Business is business, and business is about money. And sometimes, in dealing with any type of a customer, sometimes relationships become a little complex, sometimes they become untenable. Have you ever had any experience in working with a city in terms of that relationship became so untenable that you decided that it's time to fire this customer, that we're gonna walk away and let them go somewhere else?
We have had situations where I think, on occasion, the the client has not realized how challenging their situation is, or they have such a unique position and we make a good faith effort to go out and find a unicorn, so to speak, because they have such a unique position, there's three people in the whole country who might be able to fit. And on occasion, in my twenty-five years of doing this, I could probably count on one hand situations where the company and the client have agreed to part ways. We just had one recently in Virginia. We had a a former consultant within our group, he's now moved to a different place in the company. He agreed to take on a search for a county in Virginia to find a board-certified psychiatrist with a couple of specializations in some type of community mental health and extremely rare individual. And those individuals with those credentials are extremely highly compensated. We searched for it for months and I think we had just a handful of candidates and several of them lacked the actual psychiatrist certification, the board-certified. So we agreed with that county to part ways. It does happen on occasion, but as you say, we're people, the clients are people. And despite our best efforts, sometimes things don't align, but it's extremely rare or we wouldn't be in business.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it to, oh, Edward, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Just go open it up if there's any final questions from any council member. I'm just gonna look at the the mics to see if anything opens up, if anybody wants to say anything. Mark, yeah, go ahead.
One fin- one final question for me, I think I just heard you say, so if you did not find candidate, so we did not select a candidate after your initial five to twelve, what is then the next step? Do you continue, is there a
Yeah, we offer you a, within our proposal, you'll find a triple guarantee and it has three parts. The first is it will work until you're satisfied. If we were to bring you a group of candidates, the three, four, five that you end up interviewing, and at the end of the day, you said, well, Chuck and Edward, or Edward, those are good people, they're just not for Duncanville, then we're gonna continue to work under that original agreement until you hire a city manager. The second piece of that is, we will not solicit a person you hire away from you while he or she is in your employ. If you hire a city manager out of this process, we're not gonna come back in two years or three years or four years and say, hey, well, we got a better job over here, would you consider that? For several reasons, one is it wouldn't strike, and two, it wouldn't create very goodwill with city of Duncanville. Then the third piece of that is, we guarantee the placement for two years. If the person we placed were to leave before twenty-four months, then the recruitment only with no professional fee, you would reimburse our out-of-pocket costs, like advertising, that sort of thing. So that is will be in our contract and in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at the the mics. Give it just a second. Okay, gentlemen, I think we are finished. We do appreciate your time, and I know the hour is late. And it's it's always difficult when we have to do something like this, but I'm glad that we were able to get it accomplished. So thank you very much for your for your accommodation for us and being with us through this late hour. And stay home, stay well, stay safe. And if you would, go ahead and log off and I'll have a few closing comments with our council members.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy, I'm still showing Edward Williams open. Can you close? There you go, okay. All right, folks, appreciate, oops, his mic is Tracy, is he totally gone?
I'm taking a look, I just dismissed one of them, let me take a look and let me just double check real quick.
Yeah, I dismissed him too, Tracy, so.
Yeah, it does look like he is gone, yes, sir.
Okay, good, okay. All right, folks, appreciate it. This has been an excellent session with these two firms. I appreciate your diligence and being prepared and some good, good, good questions. We'll not have any discussions about these two firms tonight. We'll reserve all that discussion for tomorrow night after we finish interviewing firm number three. So with that, thanks very much, have a good evening.
Tomorrow night, when we go into executive session, discuss those firms for openly, open session.
It is open session. We will not go into closed session. The only closed session we're allowed, excuse me, authorized to go into is when we actually talk about the candidate themselves. So the selection of the firm is open meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I've got nine forty-one is our adjournment time. Kristen, if you want to log that, we're adjourned at nine forty-one. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.